Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation or remarks from Councilmember Harding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little bit of good news I wanted to relay. Recently been reported that last year we had over 13 million visitors in Omaha. That was the ninth year in a row that we exceeded the previous year, which I think is a great accomplishment. And those visitors add, you know, revenues to the city coffers as well as fill our hotels or restaurants and shop at our retail establishments to the tune of about $1.3 billion. And that doesn't just happen on its own. It's as a result of great work and great efforts by Visit Omaha and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'd just like to recognize them because I think sometimes we don't do the best job of giving the public all the knowledge of some of the things that are being worked on behind the scenes and continue to make our city a better place to live and to visit. And I think 2020 is obviously with all the things, looking at the schedule for events that are going to be occurring in Omaha, I think we'll see that number of 13 million exceeded again. So thanks to Visit Omaha and all the great work that they've done.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and in order to help facilitate the conduct of the business of this city, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for High Point Replat 9, located southeast of Veterans Drive and 204th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. I think the applicant has also requested a two-week layover to the November 5th meeting.
And the public hearing? We have a motion and a second, but is there anyone here who wishes to testify on this item? See, none will call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Lincoln Highway Communities located northwest of 192nd Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communication in opposition.
Public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. On behalf of the applicants here, two developers on this particular project, Miller Commerce and Say UK LLC, both of these entities are out of Springfield, Missouri. This is their first project to get to this stage here in Omaha. They do have two or three other projects coming down the pike, so they're pretty vested in spending some dollars here in our city. The request before you is for a preliminary plat for a location out on 192nd and Honeysuckle. Once we get focused here. So to the north of us, this is old Lincoln Highway. South is residential uses. To the west is Elcorn, 204th Street, and to the east is additional residential uses. The parcel in question is this 21-acre tract of land. It's an interesting piece of property. It's proved itself pretty difficult to develop just from various site constraints. While we're here today for the preliminary plat, you will see the PUD and the final plat come together at another hearing. The PUD is being utilized just because this is a very constrained site, just from the physical characteristics and a couple of other things. So this creek right here, there's a 50, or a 3 plus 1 plus 50 setback. So effectively of the 21 acres, we had a setback 50 feet from that. In addition, we've been working with Public Works for the better of a year or so with the closure of the waste treatment facility, which is right here. The city is now requesting for the interceptor sewer to dissect this property as well. So at this point, those easements are all in place, but that again is a 20-foot easement, which has kind of again shrunk how this property is being laid out. Further, 192nd Street, we know that will be expanded in the years to come, so we work with Ryan Haas and Public Works to grant some of this land over here for the future expansion of 192nd. And certainly last but not least, but there is a master plan trail that comes along and was supposed to go along Lincoln Highway. It's just not going to be feasible. There's a bridge alone that would have cost $300,000, so we've worked with the Parks Department about the feasibility of bringing that trail along Honeysuckle Street and connecting with the trailhead that will exist, that's currently existing right there. So a lot going on on this little piece of property. Here is the preliminary plat itself. You can see here's the city's interceptor sewer. Here's the setbacks as far as the creek. Here's the out, there's two outlots going to be created for the expansion of 192nd Street. But what is being proposed here is 55, 55, 55, 55-year and older retirement community. There'll be single-family units, about 2,000 square feet for each of these units, a retirement-type community. Tenants will, in addition to the rent, will include utilities, Cox Cable, internet, concierge service pool. So it's a pretty neat product that the developers are laying out. Here's the actual site itself. This is to the north, south, west, and east. But again, 55 units. It's master plan compliance, so this particular project comes before you with both the recommendation of approval from the department as well as Planning Board. Myself and Eric Williams with Olson are here for any questions, to the extent you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
I'm sorry, just a couple of questions. Again, the raw acreage is approximately, what, 22 acres?
Twenty, yeah, just about 22. It's 21.9.
I missed it, but I think that weren't there, maybe you mentioned it, but were there some detention issues to relate to?
So another, yeah. The sixth issue that's making this really difficult is the wetlands delineation. So we have been working to try and delineate wetlands on our site. Again, as I described, we're pretty short on space, so we've tried to go find some wetland banks throughout the city. There's none available. So we continue to work with the Corps of Engineers to find some sort of temporary mitigation onsite where we continue to look for permanent mitigation offsite. And that again, that's probably been a six-month delay just on that wetlands issue. So there's a lot of, a lot of development restrictions on this property that are just making it really difficult.
All right, okay. It's a good project, thanks. I'll move to approve.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for West Hampton Park, located southeast of 204th Street and Blondo Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Lowes. I'm with TD2 Engineering, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Greg Stowers and Edward Rose Development Company. This is a minor plat. What we're talking about today is a revised preliminary plat for lots 7 through 12 and Outlot D, south and east of 204th and Blondo Parkway, out in the Elcorn area. No real public improvements required for this project except for a trail that we are working with Public Works and the Parks Department on to run along Grant Street, which is east of this development, but was committed in previous preliminary plat efforts by Edward Rose years ago. So there's some issues to work out there, but generally the infrastructure's in place. It's a matter of splitting these lots into commercial lots within one large 34-acre outlot, which is primarily floodway, floodplain, 3 to 1 plus 50 setback. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Scott, sorry. Before I get too far. Kind of a similar neighborhood to the last, last project we were just discussing. It's just, I wanted to thank the developers for the investment in the area, but also to show that we talk a lot about development kind of going south and west of the metropolitan area. This is another indication of the great things that are kind of happening out in the Elcorn area as well, too, so.
Certainly filling in two areas with Brent's project in this that are kind of difficult to develop, that have been sitting out there for a while, but certainly will complement the areas, so.
Absolutely. I'll move for approval.
Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Ponca Hills Estates located northwest of Northern Hills Drive and 66th Street with waivers to Section 53-84D Lot Front Edge for L Lot A and Section 53-99 Sidewalks. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval with the waivers just mentioned and the denial of the waiver to Section 53-93 Street Surfacing.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
I'm Kyle Hawsey with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. We are requesting the prelim plat on a property that's on the northwest corner of North 66th and Northern Hills Drive. The property is 22.6 acres roughly and zoned currently DR with the dash ED overlay. We're proposing 17 residential acreages ranging in size from one acre, the smallest to largest of 1.7 acres. There will also be two additional outlots for stormwater retention. There will be improvements to paving on 66th Street to the north property line, and we are familiar with and can go with all the requirements set by the Planning Board for approval of this plat. I'll make myself available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10 is the Furniture Row Tax Increment Financing TIF project, and the applicant has requested to withdraw the application.
Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for property located at 601 North 108th Circle. Item 11, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a CC district. Item 12, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 3 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 11 and 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. On behalf of the project applicant, Schreier Automotive. With me today is Jeff Schreier, the owner of Schreier Automotive. Before you today is, as indicated, is a special use permit within the CC zoning district. The site in question, I think we've all seen it on our way to or from work. This is the old, I think if you're from Omaha, it used to be called the Old Mill Toyota Site that sits up on the bluff at the intersection basically of Dodge Street and I-680. This site developed initially in 1962, was always a car dealership. Most recently, MP Dodge acquired this site, utilized it for office, for the brokerage services. What's being proposed here is Jeff and his team and Schreier Automotive are actually relocating their uses over at 71st and F Street and moving them all over to this site. So with this 15 new employees, they'll be doing some interior remodel just to make this more automotive sales-type uses, but otherwise the building itself is staying the same. Because we will apply the ACI 3 overlay district, there's some additional landscaping requirements that we are subject to, which we will do. But with that, we're here for any questions and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Come down, Mr. Store.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette. I have a question first.
Counsel doesn't entertain questions.
I didn't hear you close the hearing on number 10.
The item was withdrawn.
I'm sorry?
10 was withdrawn, I believe.
I can't hear you.
10 was withdrawn. It was removed from the agenda.
Withdrawn, okay. Thank you.
Are there any? Well, we close the public hearing. Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
11 and 12 are approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Penthouse Lounge located at 4530 South 84th Street.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Michael J. Fitzpatrick, 1905 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. On behalf of Tim Adi and L Bug LLC. Mr. Adi has recently purchased the Penthouse Lounge, an Omaha legend. He's very excited to be, to be part of this industry. He's a lifelong Omaha resident. He has two children, Rachel, who's a nurse at Methodist, and Chad, who's a corrections officer here in Omaha Douglas County. We think that he is an excellent person of high character, and we, I presented him here today. If anybody has any questions regarding his vision or what is going on at the Penthouse Lounge, ask.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls.
I have a question.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I was going to ask a little bit about the taxing situation, but you said we're going to lay this over?
I think so.
Okay, I'll defer.
At the recommendation of counsel.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
Second, roll call.
Can we have a little?
I don't want to go into legal advice on the record, but if you wish to speak privately, I'd be happy to. Motion is second.
Why, what was, okay. There's a motion to lay it over.
For one week.
Does it affect, does it affect the liquor license at all, the timing of it?
It's due to the state on November 1st.
So it'll be heard on the 29th.
Are we talking about continuing this matter here today, the 29th, or, because this is a matter regarding the previous owner, the taxes. Everything that, since Mr. Adi has taken over, has been paid.
There's a motion, a second, sir.
Okay.
Public hearing is closed. No further lights, roll call.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
I guess, I mean, I just, I just wanted, no one's talked to the applicant about laying it over.
I think this just materialized.
I just wanted, does the applicant have any objection to laying over for a week so that we can discuss whatever issues privately?
That, that's fine. I have to check my schedule to see if I'm available, but we'll figure something out.
Okay. Yes for a one-week layover.
Very good.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Very good.
Item 14, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Cops Pizza Company located at 7204 Jones Street.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, thank you. My name is Christopher Cops. Address is 7204 Jones Street. The company is Cops Pizza. We are before you today requesting a liquor license for our establishment.
Thank you. Have to answer any questions we have?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Ninja Japan Express located at 7641 Cast Street.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
We're registering for a new liquor license.
What is your name and address, please?
Oh, Connie Wong, 7641 Cast Street, Omaha.
Thank you. When you're here, happy to answer any questions. Great. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Zica Indian Cuisine located at 14134 West Center Road.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Kathleen Foster. I'm the attorney at Peterson and Foster Law, 14747 California Street, Suite 2, 68154. I'm here on behalf of Sirem Inc., corporation doing business as Zica Indian Cuisine. They've previously taken, taken occupancy in the space located at 14134 West 144th Street. It's a space previously occupied by Sushi Japan, and they are operating an Indian Cuisine restaurant, requesting the council approve a liquor permit.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 17, a resolution to request that the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission require Rain Ultra Lounge located at 8919 North 30th Streets submit a formal application for their Class C liquor license. Ace Communications and Support.
Before we begin the public hearing on item 17, last the Ryan Wiesen from the City Law Department come forward, followed by Captain Matuso of the Northeast Precinct.
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. We are here today at the request of the City Council Law Committee to determine whether there is sufficient reason to believe that Millionaire Minds Entertainment doing business as Rain Ultra Lounge no longer meets the license requirements as set forth in the license application in Class C liquor license as it has been renewed from time to time. If there is sufficient reason to believe that the license holder no longer meets the license qualifications that existed at the time that the license was issued, the City Council may vote to require the license holder to submit a long-form application to the Liquor Control Commission. The City Council, as a local governing body for the city of Omaha, may require this at any time pursuant to Nebraska Vice Statute, Section 53-135. The Nebraska Supreme Court has held that a long-form application may be required if there is a showing that the licensee no longer meets the licensing criteria. This requires the council to consider, one, has something materially changed about the license or location from when the license was issued? And, two, whether the licensee no longer meets the qualifications to have a license. Nebraska Vice Statute 53-132 states that a license may be issued to an applicant who is, one, fit, willing, and able to properly provide the services of the licensed premises; two, able to conform to all the provisions and requirements of the rules and regulations adopted pursuant to the Nebraska Liquor Control Act; three, can demonstrate that they have the type of management and control over the licensed premises that will be sufficient to ensure that the business can conform to all applicable rules and regulations; and, four, that the issuance of the licenses will be required by the present or future public convenience and necessity. I've marked several exhibits assisting keeping track of the documentations today. The first item that has been marked is the liquor applications for Millionaire Minds Entertainment LLC has been marked as exhibit number one. In relevant part, on page 17 of this slide, of this exhibit, states, quote, "All applicants agree to operate the licensed business with all applicable, within all applicable laws, rules, regulations, and ordinances, and to cooperate fully with any authorized agent of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission." The applicant certifies that they will comply with that statement. Additionally, on page 24, under the business plan for the Millionaire Minds LLC doing business as Rain Ultra Lounge, the applicant makes the statement that there is a new place in Florence called Rain where they have great food and live entertainment. We are looking to offer a relaxing atmosphere that you will feel comfortable coming out to and having a great time. Quote, "We plan to include but not limit ourselves to a vast array of foods and cocktails. We plan on offering themed evenings such as nights where you can come in and hear a live band, enjoy a meal, and enjoy a glass of your favorite beverage with a southern twist. We aim to give our patrons a warm, cozy, and inviting experience that will keep them coming back for more," end quote. Since the license was granted in 2017, 11 tavern reports have been issued to Rain Ultra Lounge, 10 of which involve disturbances or assaults, 2 of those involved firearms, and 1 involved a homicide. Additionally, there is at least one instance of an alleged possible over-serving of alcohol. What's been marked as exhibit 2 is the first of those tavern reports, which was related to an incident that occurred on August 7, 2017. In it, the allegation is that, at that location, Lacey Mason advised she was assaulted by her boyfriend while at Rain Lounge. She advised that her boyfriend, James Overton, is the owner of a bar. She was 31 weeks pregnant at the time, and the allegation is that she stated that Overton charged at her and grabbed her by her arm and chest, which resulted in scratches in her right underarm, and was yelling at her until her 11-year-old daughter yelled for him to stop. Quote, "Mason advised Overton pushed her to the ground where she fell on her right side, causing pain and discomfort." Exhibit number 3 is a tavern report that was issued on January 5, 2018. It involves the homicide and assault of Sergeant Jason LaFleur, that gun-related violence related to the incident. Tavern number, exhibit number 4 is a tavern report that was issued on November 24, 2018. In it, a reporting officer, Hanson, was monitoring a large crowd at the Rain Ultra Lounge when reporting officer observed a female assaulting a male in the parking lot. Reporting officer detained the female, and the male party left before giving a statement. The female told the reporting officer that earlier she had been inside the bar and the male party had assaulted her female cousin. This is why she began to fight him. Exhibit number 5 is a tavern report from January 20, 2019. In it, Officers Barnes and Mead contacted the victim, Paris Walker. He stated that the Rain Lounge, while at the Rain Lounge, she was assaulted by several people and was cut with a box cutter. Walker stated the incident occurred between 12:15 and 12:40 a.m. Walker described the incident beginning inside the bar and then moving out to the fenced-in, covered smoking area in the back. These officers had responded to the Rain Lounge for a liquor complaint in the parking lot, while on scene, Barnes and Mead observed disorderly conduct in the parking lot. Barnes and Mead contacted the onsite security, who advised they were closing the bar due to a fight. Security advised they had deployed pepper spray while trying to disperse the crowd. Exhibit number 6 is a tavern report that was issued on March 13, 2019. In it, the report states that the victim stated there was a fight inside the Rain Ultra Lounge, and she was injured by the fighting parties. Security used chemical agents to break up the fight. Security never notified police. Exhibit number 7 is a tavern report that was issued on March 20, 2019. In it, the report states, "An intoxicated female patron began causing a disturbance and was ordered to leave the property. She refused and tried to re-enter the bar. The officer stood in the doorway preventing her access. She began yelling and throwing her arms about, striking Officer Hogan in the face." Officer Hanson arrested her for resisting requests to leave and disorderly conduct. While at corrections, the female arrestee told Officer Hanson that she drank way too much alcohol while at Rain. Reporting officer observed her swaying while she stood, and she needed assistance walking. Exhibit number eight is a tavern report issued on June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. In it, it states that officers were called to Rain Lounge. Upon arrival, reporting officers spoke with three parties who said that they had been assaulted. These parties, Tyree Sherrod, stated that Justin Redding assaulted her, and Justin Redding stated that Levanta Story and Tybri Sherrod assaulted him. There's general allegations of fights, punches to the face, and other disturbance-related activities. Exhibit number nine is a tavern report that was issued on June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. In it, Sergeant Finch advised the defendant, Antonio Ficklin, that he was involved in a disturbance with another male and was specifically asked to leave the disturbance and refused to leave. Reporting Officer Hogan advised Ficklin pushed him approximately four to five times while trying to get another party into handcuffs. Ficklin interfered while reporting officers were attempting to get others involved in the disturbance to leave. Reporting Officer Hogan also advised that Ficklin had assaulted a security guard at this location who refused to file a report. Exhibit number ten is a tavern report that was just issued on July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Quote, "The victim, Brandon Curtis, was intentionally struck by a vehicle being driven by a female after a verbal altercation. Officer Hogan advised the vehicle was a red sedan and that the vehicle was leaving the parking lot." Exhibit number eleven is a tavern report that was issued on September fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Reporting officers were called to the area of the Rain Lounge in regards to a parking complaint related to the business. Three officers were on scene providing police presence due to the large crowds associated with the business. Reporting officers heard several gunshots. The investigation revealed a large fight involving dozens of patrons, and business security had erupted and spread across Highway seventy-five North Thirtieth Street. Several rounds were fired. No victims were immediately identified, however, officers located blood evidence in casings nearby. Exhibit number twelve is a tavern report that was issued on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. In it, officers assisted deputies from the State of Nebraska in conducting a writ of seizure. While doing so, the officers were unable to locate the liquor license for Rain Lounge, which is required by ordinance to be posted in plain view. Apparently, the license was stated to be hung in the back room. Exhibit number thirteen is a citizen complaint. In relevant part, it states, quote, "We have received a multitude of complaints of noise, violence, and trash relating to the Rain and its customers. The Rain Lounge is located on North Thirtieth Street. It is a Nebraska State Highway and a major thoroughfare for northeast Omaha. I have heard from many that they are now frightened to drive on Thirtieth Street because of the occurrences surrounding the lounge at night. The lounge is also surrounded by residential neighborhoods to the east, south, and west, and we have received numerous complaints about noise and trash." Exhibit number fourteen is another citizen complaint. In relevant part, it states, quote, "Also, I had frequently noticed empty liquor in beer containers on the north perimeter of the community center building." Exhibit number fifteen is another citizen complaint. Again, in relevant part, it states, quote, "The current operation and ongoing existence of the Rain Lounge is divergent from the ambiance and general peace of the Florence community. The neighborhood association is aware of multiple disturbances requiring police involvement. Rain Lounge abuts a busy sidewalk along Thirtieth Street that is the main walking and bicycling access to Florence from Wyman Heights. Multiple residents have noticed the sidewalk littered with trash, broken glass, and on multiple occasions, tire marks as Rain customers have driven across the lawn and sidewalk to leave its premises." Exhibit number sixteen is a petition that has been submitted to the city for multiple citizens. In it, they allege, quote, "Since June of two thousand seventeen, the Rain Ultra Lounge has promoted events on weekend and weekday evenings that has drawn large crowds, that quickly filled the thirty-five available parking spaces, and spilled into adjoining commercial, residential, and city-owned lots. At bar closing time, the patrons gather outside and continue to party, yelling, fighting, honking their car horns, squealing their tires, and creating a traffic hazard." Exhibit number seventeen is another citizen complaint. Again alleging excessive alcohol consumption outside the establishment, parking concerns, and overall noise violations and traffic congestion. Exhibit number eighteen is another citizen concern. Again, it alleges that while a member of the Omaha Coalition for Citizens Patrol in the Florence area, they have observed parking causing considerable damage to the grass along rights-of-way, cars jumping curbs, cars driving the wrong way against traffic on Thirtieth Street and across the island on Thirtieth Street, lounge patrons blocking the driveways of residences to the south and east of the lounge, public urination, loud crowds at clothes, drug use, used condoms, more evidence of drug use, and instances, specifically the September fifteenth incident, which related to gunshots and cars fleeing the area. Exhibit number nineteen is a writ of seizure from the State of Nebraska. In it, it alleges that Mr. Overton doing businesses Millionaire Minds Entertainment owes thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and twelve cents in back taxes. This could provide evidence of the applicant, the licensee's, ability to conduct business dealings appropriately in accordance with the Nebraska Liquor Control Rules and Regulations. Exhibit number twenty is an email from the City Finance Department. It indicates that Mr. Overton attempted to pay two checks for his outstanding restaurant occupation taxes, and that these checks were returned for insufficient funds. Nebraska Vice Statute twenty-eight dash six six one, sub-paragraph four, states, "Whoever otherwise issues or passes a check, draft, assignment of funds, or similar signed order for the payment of money, knowing that he or she does not have sufficient funds in or credit with the draw for the payment of the check, shall be guilty of a Class Two misdemeanor. If Mr. Overton wrote these checks with knowledge that he had insufficient funds to cover the amounts written in those checks, not only could that be a Class Two misdemeanor, it would also be evidence of character and fitness and inability to provide honest and truthful statements to the governing body, the City Council." Exhibit number twenty-one is several pages and is just a general summary over specific periods of time of the police resources and law enforcement resources that were called to the area to do with issues surrounding Rain Ultra Lounge. Copies of these tavern reports and other marked exhibits have been invited to the city clerk, are a part of the record, and can be used as evidence by the council to determine whether there is cause to believe that the licensee no longer meets the licensing criteria. The council may also consider testimony today from any citizen protest and other video and documents submitted to the city clerk. That will be available for questions in the event that the council has any.
Thank you, Mr. Weeson. Captain Matusa, did you wish to say anything?
Good afternoon. Captain Matusa, Northeast Precinct, Omaha Police Department, five oh five South Fifteenth Street. A little bit of overview since our last hearing on May twenty-first, the Rain Lounge has had a steady number of complaints. The complaints from neighbors and other businesses are still about the parking, open drinking, open drug use, trash left behind, noise, reckless driving, fight disturbances, and gang members more prevalent after midnight. The positives are that Mr. Overton, when asked to, he installed a fence around the parking lot to keep vehicles from driving onto Thirtieth Street, so we do appreciate that. The update on the Rain Bar hiring off duty, that was one of the stipulations that he hires off duty on the weekends as well as Tuesdays. He's done that every Tuesday because Tuesday seems to be the night of occurrence, but we've had a, where the shots fired that Brian had talked about was a doozy in regards to shots fired, and then it spilled out. If I could talk a little bit more about the tavern reports, if the City Council allows me to do that. And so, with that being said, the first incident, and I'll kind of brush over, because Ryan covered a lot of it, was on June nineteenth. Two persons, a couple persons were assaulting each other inside the bar, allegedly. Security had assaulted one of the persons after a fight broke out. We determined no probable cause was available at the time for an arrest to be made, so multiple arrest reports were made on that particular incident. Second tavern report was completed on June twenty-sixth at two fifteen a.m., also on Tuesday night, which is the night, the most common night for incidents that do happen. Talk of Tuesdays is their big night, big attraction. So, one of the Rain patrons was arrested for disorderly conduct. They ended up pushing an off-duty Omaha Police Officer four or five times before they were finally arrested. Third incident, July seventeenth, officers received a radio call for cutting. Arrived there, the victim was not cut, fortunately, but it looked like she was assaulted. There were several people that were arguing in the parking lot. And then, when Mr. Overton was asked to produce his liquor license for that night's incident, Mr. Overton stated to the officer, "This won't go anywhere. This is just a waste of time," and then handed over his liquor license to the officer on that particular incident. A fourth incident was on July twenty-fourth at two a.m., again on Tuesday. Officers received a radio call in regards to a felony assault that had just occurred. A female had driven over a victim's, I think it was like an ex-boyfriend sort of thing, ran over his foot, and then took off. Fortunately, we have resources readily available just in case something like that happens, because it happens a lot, as we've heard already, on Tuesdays. So, there was a sergeant positioned there, saw the vehicle take off. Pursuit ensued, and ultimately, the suspect was arrested. But, as you can tell, there are a lot of resources being used at these incidents, and it should also be noted that the Northeast Precinct and State Patrol, like I said before, spending many hours, I would say two hundred hours plus over the past four and a half months, combining, if you combine radio calls and officers assigned, because we do have officers that are assigned at that particular, like Tuesdays and on the weekend, fifty cat calls over the past four and a half months were combining radio calls and assignments. So, I attribute that to the gang unit that, or the gang element, I'm sorry, the gang element that the bar is attracting. The victim and the suspect in the aforementioned case were both documented gang affiliates, and the next incident that I'm going to talk about is also gang-related. The fifth incident was on late Saturday night on September fifteenth at one fifteen a.m. Officers received a radio call to the Rain Bar in regards to multiple parking complaints they get there, and all of a sudden, now there's shots fired. So, then, they drive into the parking lot and discover a very large fight that spills into the street, and Ryan had talked a little bit about that. There were dozens of officers and state patrolmen that, fortunately, that were there onsite, and some of the neighborhood association, citizen patrol were out and about at that time, and thanked me for having our officers there at that time when that fight happened because it could have gotten really ugly, and it did. It moved down the street, six blocks, to the Amoco at Thirty, the Martin Ave. We had more shots fired there, and multiple fights, and speaking of multiple, multiple hours were spent on reviewing video, and we found out exactly who was doing the shooting. So, kudos to our gang unit, discovering who that person was, identified him like three or four days later, confirmed he was at the Rain Lounge, confirmed he was the one that shot at Amoco, and he is a documented gang member, and a convicted felon in charge with such. So, that was definitely a significant incident on that particular day. And then, the last one I'll talk about, the sixth incident was on October fifth. Several of our officers were requested. We didn't reach out to Nebraska Department of Revenue Investigators in regards to the late taxes, late state taxes, in which Mr. Overton, Millionaire Minds, is responsible for over thirteen thousand seven hundred. He's delinquent, and they did a writ of seizure, and that was spoken to already about, in that the Rain Bar is still delinquent. I spoke to the investigator about that yesterday. They're still delinquent in regards to that issue. So, that covers in depth our past five months of activity since the last time we were here on May twenty-first. So, we also have been getting a lot of complaints like the, Ryan had talked about in regards to the items that he brought up, complaints from the library, and complaints about the Rain patrons leaving trash behind. July seventh and multiple other dates, we have been getting complaints about patrons parking in neighboring businesses' lots, business lots. Albertson's Glass Company, and I believe they have a representative here as well. So, the Rain patrons are drinking and leaving trash behind, and we'll still monitor that closely on Tuesdays and on the weekends as well. So, that covers kind of a lot. Does anyone have any questions for me?
We'll come back to you after the public hearing.
Okay.
Do you have to leave?
No, I'm just.
We'll now open this up for proponents, those in favor of requiring the form of long-form application.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is John Lemonelli, M-E-N. I live at thirty-one fourteen Fillmore Street, which is seven hundred feet west of the Rain Lounge. I've lived in that neighborhood since nineteen fifty-four. I left there for twenty years to get married and have kids and all that, but I moved back in and there ever since. Listening to the testimony from the captain, this is just unbelievable how our little neighborhood has gone downhill since two years ago when the Rain moved in. I'm a member of the Citizens Patrol. I'm a board member of North Omaha Commercial Club and Florence Historical Foundation, but I'm here today to speak on behalf of our neighbors, knowing that most of them work and could not come down to testify. My wife, Diane, and I went out Thursday and Friday and did a petition. We walked around, and it took a lot longer than I'd thought, because everybody we talked to had a story and wanted to go on, and it's, it was quite compelling. The council passed a good neighbor ordinance a long time ago, and talking to the neighbors, it was amazing that almost all the conduct that's constituted a nuisance happened right during the rains, moving in. They talk about adverse peace or safety of persons residing in, working, or using the surrounding area, disturbance of peace, illegal drug activity, consuming alcohol on neighboring private property without the owner's consent, public urination, assaults, act of vandalism, littering, loitering, excessive loud noises. We heard about all that while we were gathering those petitions. I'd like to put up a map showing the Rain Lounge. You can see there in green. The residences circled in red are the neighbors that signed the petition, so it's not people from three, four, or five miles away. These are all neighbors within a thousand feet. So, we're upset. We'd like to see the lounge closed rather than this continuing on with a long form, but understand what you have to do and be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hello. My name is Lonnie Albertson, eighty-nine oh one North Thirtieth Street. Me and my brother started Albertson Brothers Glass fifteen years ago down there. For thirteen years, we didn't have any major problems, other than a little trash on the ground after Three's Lounge had a busy weekend. Since it has become the Rain, we have had problems with parking, broken liquor bottles, used condoms, and many other forms of trash vomit in our front and back lots, as well as urine on our building and property. To try and control this, we resorted to closing our lot with the city from eight p.m. to five a.m. Sometimes this has worked, but now our customers are not able to leave their vehicles in our lot overnight for their convenience. Due to multiple incidences that have occurred at the Rain Lounge, we've had several visits from law enforcement, including the gang unit requesting our video surveillance footage to assist in their investigations. The most recent, September fifteenth, when there was multiple fights and gunshots, people were running back and forth across Thirtieth Street while vehicles were jumping curbs and driving south in the northbound lanes. I think the biggest problem is that this establishment went from a neighborhood bar to something resembling more of a nightclub, and Florence really isn't designed for that. The lot doesn't have the parking accommodations, and there are residential areas that are being negatively affected. We wish Jay the best of luck in his business endeavors, but I don't think his success should be at the expense of his neighbors.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Ray Perrigo, eight zero zero seven North Thirtieth Street in Omaha, in the Florence area. I'm a lifelong resident of Florence, living in the same house for the last forty-six years. I am also a member of the Florence Citizen Patrol, and I'll briefly skip over some of this because Captain Matusa covered it, but on September fifteenth, I was right in the middle of what happened there with the big fight. In fact, I think I was the one that made one of the first calls. I almost hit several people running out of the Rain across Thirtieth Street. I was out patrolling. They ran right out in the street. There were fights in both lanes, had the street completely blocked. When the police arrived, they broke that fight up there in the middle of Thirtieth Street, right directly across from the Rain, but as I turned around and started to head back home, two more fights broke out down about a block and a half from the Rain, right in the middle of Thirtieth Street. They jump out of their cars, they start fighting. On October fifteenth, there was a party bus at the Rain that had jumped the curb on Thirtieth Street and was parked up on the sidewalk with the rear end of the bus. curb on 30th Street and was parked up on the sidewalk with the rear end of the bus out into the street. I called that in because it was impeding traffic. The security, a police officer arrived, and it did move the bus. What I don't understand is why Rain's security guards would allow the bus to park as it was. Then October 19th, again about 1:00 in the morning, the same party bus was back, again parked up on the sidewalk as it was on the 15th. The police arrived, and the bus moved to the north down the street. I didn't see where it had gone, because I continued patrolling in the Florence area. When I returned to the area of the Rain, the bus was parked in the southbound lane of 30th Street directly across from the Rain, and people were leaving the Rain, running across both lanes of traffic to load the bus. Traffic came to a complete standstill on 30th Street while everybody was crossing the street, two lanes of traffic to load the bus. Due to the poor lighting in the area, this is a very dangerous situation to all people involved. The drive into the Rain Lounge has been posted no trespassing by, or no parking by the city to allow Nick, the resident that lives just south of the Rain, to have some peace and quiet. The bar patrons always ignore the signs and continue to park in this area, in this no parking area. And again, I don't understand why the security guards at the Rain won't enforce the no parking area. The Rain was given time in a council meeting last May to make changes and improvements to their operation. To this date, the only improvement that I've noticed is the very, about a quarter-inch rope that surrounds the Rain. Somebody called it a fence. It's not a fence. It's been ran over several times as people run across the rope, drive across the grass to get out of the Rain. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Diane Lemon, 3114 Fillmore Street. My home is 700 feet west of the Rain, and I have an example of the typical noise that we have to listen to every night all summer. We couldn't even sleep with our windows open. Do you have this thumb drive?
I have to ask, is it a thumb drive?
Yes.
They'll show you how to load it.
This was recorded by my husband at the bottom of our property. nights down at the Rain, they have, we used to have a large motorcycle clientele that sits there and likes to show off their motorcycle, so to speak, and rev, and rev, and rev, and rev. Right at the bottom of our hill also is a family with a five-year-old daughter that needs to go to sleep, and the gunshots that were fired in this parking lot recently would go as far as their home. And Holly and Wendy Porter are quite distressed about this. Questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'm a proponent, but for a different reason. I think the citizens need to know that the city is passing the buck here. The city should deny this application, not the State Liquor Board Commission. I should not have to go down to Lincoln to appear before them to stop the stuff that's going on in places like that at those hours of the night. That's your responsibility, it's not theirs. We expect you to protect the citizens, but also our law enforcement people, and save our tax dollars from having to go out and break stuff up like that. And now we have all these entertainment districts. You're going to have more of it. People outside, millennials outside, they're going to do this stuff. We've heard this almost every city council meeting we've had, the same type of stuff. We expect you to take the bow by the horn and not request the state to take over your job here. This is your job, not theirs. Please, take responsibility for what's happening on the streets of Omaha. You've heard about the laws, the safe streets. Enforce it, please, but give them the ability to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, the State Liquor Control Commission is the sole arbiter of whether or not a liquor license is issued, canceled, revoked. Are there any other opponents?
For the record, under this, I believe it's Chapter 53, am I right, Mr. Wees? Of the Nebraska statutes, vests from the legislature to the Liquor Control Commission, the sole authority to grant, deny, revoke, suspend, or cancel a liquor license, not the City of Omaha. We're a recommending body by state law. Are there any other opponents?
Proponents, excuse me.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North, excuse me, 2205 North 24th Street, proponent for the long form. This is a case that I, similar to others in, like maybe two years ago, three years ago, when I first started coming to city council, you guys had clubs or bars that had patrons that weren't following the law, and the police had difficulties with those establishments. And so this kind of reminds me of this. I think Mr. Store has a point, not completely, but that there's some fault with the city council being punitive with establishments instead of working with them, especially in North Omaha. It's easier to shut down establishments and say, well, they don't know how to run the place, or the culture there isn't what the corporate of city needs. So I would encourage you guys to work with the business owners, because when you start shutting out, shutting down clubs and bars, people need excitement and an outlet, and they're going to go somewhere, somewhere else. And so, you know, I kind of feel for the establish, for the liquor license holder, because I, you can't control everyone. You can control how many people go into your establishment, but, you know, I think that it's something that, working together, we can resolve, or at least alleviate, the problem of violence and people being excited and not having an outlet. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Mr. Chairman of Liquor Committee, how many times did the city council law committee have this licensee in to work with the licensee before it proceeded to the level that it is? Two or three?
Yeah, two or three, right. And also, the captain has been in front of us. This is not an issue. There just has been, within the last few weeks, as you can tell by the number of complaints, and we have been trying to make this thing work, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? You're out of order, Mr. Jimenez. Proponents, seeing none, oponents?
James Overton, Millionaire Mines Entertainment, 8919 North 30th Street. I look at these things, and I review these things, and I've worked with Matusa in regards to actually getting these actual issues resolved. As far as the parking situation, you are parking issues all over the city. You got parking issues in Dundee, you got parking issues in Blackstone, you got parking issues in Benson. Now, as far as our business is concerned, I'm not an advocate for the incidents that have occurred. I'm not over here cheerleading for them, thinking that it's actually right, but I've actually hired everything and everything that you have asked me to do. Off-duty OPD has been on site. The barrier to keep people from actually going ahead and driving over it, like I said, if they have a problem with the way the barrier looks, like I said, it was approved. I approved it with Matusa. He said it was fine. As long as we keep the people from driving across the rest, they don't park in the grass anymore. Like I said, as far as the trash is concerned, I've actually got video, like I said, of the neighbors digging the trash out of trash and throwing it on the ground, taking pictures. I'm like, come on. Like I said, seriously, I've got video of that. My cameras work good. They work real well. Matter of fact, they work so well, they were actually instrumental in actually helping to actually grab the actual perpetrators in the actual Kylea floor case. Our cameras work well, so we see everything also. As far as being a good neighbor to Albertson's Glass, like I said, I go above and beyond for them. Nowhere else in the city of Omaha do they actually come to me and say that, you know, you all have to actually go ahead and actually patrol their lot, tape their lot off every night that you're busy, make sure that the patrons don't park there. I do that every night. It looks like a crime scene every time you come to my business. This is a deterrent. I've lost money from actually people not wanting to come to me because they figure, like I said, there's a police presence there, and there's been an incident there from the yellow and red tape that's everywhere, every Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday, just trying to keep their lot clean and actually, they're just trying to respect them. That's not my responsibility to repolice their public property. That's their private property. That's their responsibility to take care of. Like I said, basically, this was the amounts to as a modern-day lynching. You've got about seven people out of the 10,000 people that actually live in the actual Florence area that have something to say about what's going on there. And they've done everything to call me a nigger to my face, everything but. Like I said, these are the type of people that sit there, whatever, and actually cheer for the actual African-American community on Sunday, go big red. But if you bring them to your house, I don't want them here. And like I said, I see it for what it is. These things right here, I've worked with city finance. Ms. Hawkins, she was very, very helpful. I actually paid the city a restaurant tax just the other day. Got it caught up, took care of that. The check situation that he brought up, whatever, as far as writing the checks, the checks were actually postdated checks. You check the date on them. Ms. Hawkins was supposed to take care of that. One was supposed to be deposited one week, the other was supposed to be filed the other. They deposited them both at once, screwed my accounts up. So that's why the checks bounced. But it's been resolved now. And as far as the state taxes, someone on your city council picked up the phone and actually called the actual state and said, Rain is not going to be in business very long. So that's why the seizure actually supposedly happened, or the $13,000, whatever, the supposedly owed for the state tax. I've got a recording of me actually talking to the actual state auditor, and him telling me, we got a call from the city. That's why we came and actually did the seizure. There's companies inside this city, whatever, whatnot, I can actually run off a list of them if we want to go down it. Like I said, as far as people that owe $24,000 to $50,000 worth of tax. Like I said, taxes are an ongoing thing. They're never going away. Like I said, for you guys to sit up there and actually hold being accountable, saying that I'm not paying the taxes, I'm paying the taxes. Like I said, the city restaurant tax, which I feel is absolutely illegal, like I said, for you to target one industry and make them act reliable for your actual miscomings as far as managing the budget, like I said, your shortfalls are not actually supposed to be due to one industry. Like I said, we own many restaurants. I don't only own just actually Rain, we own Jim's Rip Haven, we own a lot of different places in Omaha, a lot of different entities that actually produce revenue for your city. Like I said, and sometimes I look back and say, you know what, I think I made a mistake actually coming here and actually going ahead. I'm not from here. Like I said, it's different in the South. I'm from Atlanta. And growing up there, they explain to you, to your face, they'll tell you, nigger, we don't like you here. But here, the economic disparity, you do it behind closed doors in your closed office meetings. You actually go ahead and take it away from them and say, so you know what, you're not going to prosper. You're not going to have a place for your people to actually go ahead and congregate. You're not going to have a right to assemble. You're not going to have any of these things, just for the simple fact of the color of the skin that you have. A friend of mine told me the other day, he said, yeah, you know, it's like you, in Omaha again, you said, I left there a while ago. It's because all they see is that permanent skin disease you have. Like I said, they don't recognize you for the person that you are, and the business that you're trying to do, and the service you're trying to provide. These people have no clue what it takes to actually go ahead and make sure that we actually go ahead and provide jobs for people. The Albertson's Glass has their thing going. That's all family. That's their thing. But we provide jobs, we provide a service, we reinvest back into the community as far as homes, other businesses. We're opening two other businesses here in the next six months that require liquor licenses, but they're going to be open and running, and they're going to provide jobs. But yeah, Rain was a vehicle for the actual finances initially for it to actually go ahead and get these things up and running. The first year, we did well. We really did. We did well the first year. The second year, like I said, after the incident, but unfortunately with Mr. Florson, like I said, literally, and like I said, I brought information to him and his family in regards to their son, because I know how it is to be shut out by law enforcement as far as what's going on with my child. And something that actually transferred, I came to his home and explained exactly what was going on, what actually what happened to his child, explained to them exactly the whole process, what happened, and what we knew, to try to give them some peace of mind, even though it'll never bring your son back, and I regret that. But my thing about it is, like I said, the stuff as far as the tavern reports are concerned, especially the one involving Ms. Mason, like I said, that was unfounded. It was dismissed. It already has been reviewed at the actual liquor commission level in Lincoln. It was all, it was all fabricated. It was crazy. But it was a lack of me actually being able to give her money, but it's something different. But at anything, like I said, to go ahead and sum it all up, though, I think the city needs to really take a close look at itself, and the actual retention of actually trying to provide entertainment in the African-American community. I mean, I look at it from a perspective of what just happened here the last week, you know, what actually, 1912, and everything's going away. And within the last 90 days, they had two incidents. I don't blame those people that actually own the business. They're doing what they can to actually go ahead and create a safe environment. I blame the individuals involved. All the people that actually are the shooters and everything else, supposedly with the gang members and everything else, by all means, OPD, pick them up. If you get names, you get video and all the rest of the stuff, prosecute them. We don't want them in our businesses. We're not here to do that. Like I said, that's not the type of establishments we run. I'm not over here sitting there saying, I'm not going to give you video. Every time that you come to me, I cooperate fully, above and beyond. This is what I know. Like I said, at the end of the day, like I said, I'm here to actually go ahead and provide a service to the community, not to be a nuisance, not to be a rag, not to be anything else, whatever. These stuff with these people, like I said, literally, they're inebriated, they're drunk. I think my security did an excellent job, especially on the night of September 15th. Though the parties that actually involved in the fight, we broke up the actual disturbance inside of the building. We got them to their cars. Phone calls were made. Others, individuals pulled up on North 30th Street, like the gentleman said. Other cars came down the street, they jumped out of their cars, and they started fighting in the middle of 30th. They weren't fighting at Rain anymore. We dispersed that crowd, got them in their cars. They were all in the middle of 30th. They jumped out of their cars and actually started fighting in the middle of 30th Street. My security made it a point to say, that's not our problem anymore. They're on North 30th Street. I said, yes, it is. It's our issue. I said, I want you to go out there, and I want you to resolve this issue, because there was one man that actually looked like that he was going to get plummeted to death. And I told my security, go get them out of here. And they went over, they actually dispersed it, then OPD pulls up, they got it actually under control. I'm not here to actually be the bad guy. I'm really not. I'm here to actually go ahead and provide a service. These people don't even know, are oblivious that four of the businesses in their actual sacred Florence community are about to close. You sit up there and talk trash about them, about your area, your neighborhood, but you don't even support the local businesses. You don't support them. They're about to close. Four other businesses I can name off right now that are about to close their doors in Florence. That place is going to be a ghost town. Nothing left. Like I said, if we, but according to it, say, you know what, we're going to revitalize it. We're going to go ahead and try to bring Florence back. Right now, it's nothing. They're going away. And like I said, it hurts my heart to sit up and see that. People don't even know the investments and the time that it takes. You know, it took me two years to actually go ahead and close the deal and get this bar open? Two years. Two years, working two jobs at 80 hours, whatever, like the course of a week, plus hours, to go ahead and raise enough money, because the banks didn't give me the money. It came out of my pocket, straight cash. Every dollar that went in the Rain didn't come out of any bank or any financial institution, no actual TIF funds or any kind of secret actual pockets or anything else like that. It came out of my pocket. And for them to sit up and say, you know, it's disheartening. For them to sit up and say that, yo, you know what you're doing is running a bad business. No. There are some bad apples in a bunch. Don't get me wrong. But like I said, we made actual changes to try to keep the other individuals out. Like Matusa said, like I said, there's some gang affiliated people that we don't want in our business. All we want to do is run a good business. The parking situation's concerned, I put that on y'all. Everybody that's sitting up here, I'm just going to the city planning department, that's still haven't vacated the properties to the west of us at all. I still haven't gotten any information back from you all as far as exactly when it's going to be completed with you all in state of Nebraska, so I can acquire the property, get the proper parking. So you want to talk to somebody about parking, talk to them. This has been going on, like I said, since the last meeting. Ain't nothing happened. Now, as far as my financial situation is concerned... Now, as far as my financial situation is concerned, I'll trust and believe, it's cleaned up now. I sold a couple of real estate properties, we got cash on hand to do what we got to do. And the situation with the state with the taxes is concerning, we got that under control too. Oversight by my account, I employ a lot of people, like I said, there's a lot of different businesses that go into this to make this happen. So like I said, we're getting that part cleaned up, we got everything pretty much lined up as far as those financially. I'm, I'm just tired, I'm frustrated. You all make it a point to make it unwelcoming by minorities to actually congregate in the city. You really do. You make it a point that, yes, there are some bad seeds, don't get me wrong. But you successfully went after the Click, Kino King, the Richter, Grooves, Cartiers. Anybody that actually catered to an actual African American or a minority clientele, like the gentleman said, they're not working with this, they're working against us. So not only you actually sit up there and have to police the patrons, you're going to have to make sure that you're working and actually policing the police also to make sure. I had officers come down, they blocked my driveway on a couple of occasions. Strikes, sergeants, people at rank, blocked my driveway to keep people from coming to my establishment. On more than one occasion. And I, as soon as I come out of the building, I'm like, hey, what are you guys doing? They get in their cars, it's like, oh, we're sorry, people are calling me on the phone, we can't come down to your establishment because there's police actually, they're actually blocking it off. There's no incident, nothing happened, their lights are going and they're just sitting there. Granted, our lot's not full, but they still can't come down there. And like I said, all these different pieces that come into play in actually doing this business, like I said, are, are difficult, they really are. They're not simple solutions to these problems, the, the incidents with the tavern reports and different things like that. And to be honest with you, I think you all should revisit how these tavern reports are actually done. Some of this stuff, whatever, whatnot, I've never seen a piece of newspaper in my life. Never. All I do is they pop up all of a sudden when we come in front of you all. If that's the case, you want the actual businesses to do better, serve them. Put them in their hands. Don't wait till it's actually critical mass, you guys got 14 pages of different tavern reports and then you're handing to them, talking about, we're taking your license. If I got an actual paper that says, okay, well, this person is the person that actually are involved in this actual altercation, whatever, whatnot, guess what? I got security at the door. I'm holding them responsible, if this person with this ID that you're checking gets through the door and is in my establishment again, you're fired. Just that simple. I can address the issues if they're actually brought to me, this is black and white, I can, I can take this. I'll hold hardly except this, everything in it. But the whole thing about it is, like I said, your delivery process sucks. It really does. It's terrible. But again, Albertson's Glass, you got to write the piece on your property, it's your private property. From this day forward, you're responsible for roping off your property and everything else, I'm not doing it anymore. I had a meeting with, uh, the Omaha Public Library. They were very, very cooperative in accordance with what we were trying to do. They said, we had the parking initially, these people complained to the library, got the parking, took away from us. Now I'm actually in the process of working them to get a security guard there, to actually go ahead and actually get, uh, an actual, uh, insurance policy, a liability insurance policy. To make sure that the people, our patrons at our bar could actually park there. All these different things, they asked me to go ahead and actually submit in writing as a proposal. To say that, okay, we're going to go ahead and try to mitigate this actual parking issue. We didn't have this issue where people tried to park in the neighborhoods until they did what they did. Every time I look up, even with this guy back here, you live in a, a commercially zoned area behind a bar. That's just like sitting, saying, like, I live in actually, uh, New York City and I'm at Yankee Stadium, whenever, have you been by Yankee Stadium? There's people that live outside there, I hear that baseball game all the time. What do you expect? It's a baseball stadium. It don't make no sense. You live in a commercially zoned district, I'm sorry.
Sir, uh, you need to address your comments to us.
Oh, understood, but like I said, I apologize, but my whole thing about it is though, were these people in the vantage point that she's taking this video from? She's not taking that video from her front door, that this video that she just produced on the actual screen up here for you all to see? She's not. She's actually, there's a cul-de-sac, a circle at the end that has a direct line of sight to the business, and I told my security. I said, well, they're videotaping everything that we do down here. Get the patrons in their cars, they have to go. 1:45 the lights come on, 1:50 everything stops, all drinks are picked up, everybody's out the door by 2, by 2:05 the block's supposed to be clear. Just that simple. The vantage point she took that video from, she wasn't outside her front door, I'll tell you that much. Anybody with good sense knows that. And I watched the media and the way that they actually portrayed the situation, I watched a, a video clip, whatever, that came on Channel 6 the other night. And then they showed pictures of, uh, like some, some Martell bottles and some, some liquor bottles and stuff like that. That stuff wasn't on the ground, that stuff was in a trash can, that's why it was floating in water. He took a picture of a trash can and put it out there, like, oh, there's trash everywhere. No, there's not, come down there any given day. I pick the trash up myself, I'm not too good. I pick it all up. 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, whatever it takes, I've been on the road overnight before I got there at 5:30 in the morning to make sure there was no trash in your lot. Been driving for two days, but came over to pick the trash. Huh?
Listen, we're going to have order in the chamber.
Understood, alright, so let me wrap this up, make a long story short. These seven people that, or eight people that actually are here today, plus these couple of letters, whatever, I don't feel are indicative of the actual whole Florence neighborhood. I really don't.
Thanks, James, you're repeating yourself at this point.
I'm, I'm, I'm wrapping this up. Like I said, I don't feel they're indicative of actually everything that's actually going on in this neighborhood as far as what they feel about the business. Granted, we have some issues, granted, I'm willing to work through those problems. Granted, everything that's going on inside, but to this point, has not quite been positive. But I feel as though we do bring additional life to the actual area. Because I already know, at this point, it's just a downward here spiral for you guys to see going after these actually minority owned businesses. That's all it is. It's like a witch hunt, every time we get up something, whether we cater to a minority or not, y- y- y'all go ahead and actually, go ahead and actually shut us down. Instead of working with us, like this gentleman said, y'all go ahead and actually make it a witch hunt. And it's crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. You've had your turn, Mr. Storey, you're out of or, you're out of order, you're out of order, there is no point of order. The order is, please remove him from the room. Council member Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I want to thank those that testified today, especially the neighbors and Captain Matusa and the Florence Citizens Patrol. And I would note, um, for the record, that there were petitions submitted from a number of neighbors, as noted, uh, for the public record. And also, uh, the Wyman Heights Neighborhood Association, which represents a lot of folks, and also the North Omaha Commercial Club, which represents a lot of folks, fellow business owners in what is a successful business district there. I don't feel, feel it necessary to go point by point here in terms of what we heard, but I, as you know, represent this area. And I just want to say, the only reason why we're here is because of the large crowds and the disturbances and the parking problems and the shots fired and the homicide. And trash and noise and excessive police resources to this area over a long period of time. 11 tavern reports in two years is not okay. And I hear it from lots of neighbors here, not just those that were able to come down today. Um, I've seen lots of videos like we saw today, in fact, I think that one is about 20 minutes long, but we tried to condense it, uh, in respect of everybody's time. But it gives you a sense of the problems we're, we've been dealing with in the neighborhood business district. And it is a suc- successful neighborhood business district, we put a million dollars worth of reinvestment into that area in the last few years in public resources. There are new businesses there, it's historic, it's one of the most historic neighborhood business districts in the entire city. There's a new library right by this property, a new $800,000 expansion, we have a new fire, a, a fire station that's doing well there, lots of subsidy resources we need to continue to protect and make sure do well. So, six months ago, when this did come to us with these same concerns, I did vote to revoke at that time because I felt this wasn't going to be corrected and we weren't having the accountability we needed. So I'm sorry to see that it has come back to us in the same state it was then, but I'm not surprised that's the case. I do think we tried to work with them over the last, uh, six months, I think council members tried to do that with that vote that day. And we've tried to do it previously as well, so I think that was something, uh, that has been tried, but in my opinion unsuccessfully, and it's not going to be achieved in this case. So, I want to talk to maybe Mr. Weeson here for a minute about the process we're going through today, just that's clear to everybody. Um, as he approaches, I'll, I'll maybe ask my question to him, which is, what we're considering today is now a long form process. Uh, Mr. Jaram is right, that it's ultimately the state liquor board, liquor commission who decides the fate of this license, that's true with any license, that's state law. But we are a recommending body for actions we may take to either approve or deny licenses or make them go through a process like we're talking about today. So, should we go, should we approve this today? My understanding is that recommendation then goes to the liquor commission to long form this applicant. If the liquor commission agrees, that applicant then has to submit a long form application. And what that is, is an entirely new application for a liquor license, which is much more involved, correct?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, that is correct. Nebraska revised statute 53 dash 135 states in relevant part, quote, "The commission may at any time require a licensee to submit an application and the commission shall at any time require a licensee to submit an application if requested in writing to do so by the local governing body." As a term of statutory construction, shall is a mandatory term, it's not permissive, there's no discretion in it. So if the city council votes today to, um, uh, require the liquor control commission to, uh, have Millionaire Minds Entertainment, Doing Businesses Rain, Ultra Lounge, submit a long form application pursuant to the statutory language of shall, the liquor control commission has to require them to do that long form commission. Then it will return to the city council for consideration, just like any other new liquor application would be, where the city council would then vote to either uh, recommend approval to the liquor control commission or to recommend denial to the liquor control commission. Um, the liquor control commission would then have a hearing on that recommendation and determine whether or not the license should be issued.
And during that timeframe, the applicant can continue to operate with his current license, is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Um, but there is a process we've gone through recently with another applicant that was causing issues, Club Karma, uh, that was approved for a long form situation. That was then adopted by the state liquor commission. And just recently, the state liquor commission told them, told that applicant that they must satisfy their taxes and other things within 30 days or lose their license, is that accurate?
I cannot confirm the, uh, second part of the end part of that assertion, I do know that it was sent to the commission and that they did require a long form. Um, I had heard, uh, that they chose at that point to withdraw their application at that time and not to proceed. I'm not sure of their rationale or thinking behind withdrawing that application, but that is essentially my understanding.
Okay, that's my understanding too. And should this be approved today, and should the liquor commission also agree to long form, my understanding is that long form must be submitted within 30 days, they will require that to happen.
I roughly, I believe that's, I guess, I, I don't want to assert to you that I'm confident that is 30 days, but I do believe there are certain statutory timeframes. Uh, perhaps the city clerk may have more knowledge on those timeframes than I will at this point.
I think we did discuss that, Wees, do you want to confirm that?
Um, I was told between 30 and 60 days they would have.
Okay. And when that does occur, or should that occur, um, there'll be a public hearing associated with that in Lincoln as well?
Correct, first, there will be a public hearing before the city council to determine the city council's recommendation. And then there would be a public hearing, um, at the liquor control commission if the council were to recommend denial on the license.
Right, so if we approve a long form today, then it goes to liquor commission for a long form consideration, public hearing on that, uh, I believe, right?
I think that's correct.
So it's important for folks to know that. But then, should that occur, um, then, just as you described, it will come back to us for approval or denial and also approval or denial to the state liquor commission and also have public hearings associated with those.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to make that process clear because, um, it is important to understand what they require and that it is in fact the state that has the ultimate judgment on this. But I do say, I would say, they've been taking our advice, um, strongly recently, as evidenced by Club Karma. And it is an effective means by which, uh, to get something like this addressed, and in my opinion, it does need to get addressed. Um, so, I think others may have questions and I might still have some more things to say, but I'll yield the floor for now, but move the long form approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too am not going to go through point by point, but I'll, I'll try to hit a couple of highlights, so. And I'll start out by agreeing with, uh, Mr. Overton on one thing, we, there are some areas that have parking problems, but couple that with fights, public urination, public intoxication, traffic issues, gunfire, gang activities and homicide. I don't think we find those all coupled together very often. I also find it very, the similarities between, um, the, those representing what was referenced with Club Karma and Rain, um, I find some, those similarities striking. None of it's anyone's fault with the ownership of those two establishments, or at least that's what the claim is, there's a deflection of responsibility. We see back taxes being owed in both cases. Um, and, and by the way, the time to satisfy the payment of those taxes isn't the week or two before a, a public hearing on, on requirement of a long form. You're supposed to stay current with those. The other thing is, I, I know, there was, I was going to bring this up, but Mr. Overton brought it up for us today. He, um, he was quoted as, as, uh, as saying, when he was talking about that the, uh, he was arguing that the surrounding neighborhood of white neighbors, uh, who don't like having a black owned, uh, bar catering to young black patrons in Florence. And he was quoted by saying, quote, "They look at, they look at us as another urban hip hop bar with a bunch of troublemakers and that's not what we're about," close quote. I don't agree with that statement, or the impression he's trying to portray, that this is an issue of race. And again, I'm referring back to Club Karma, we had, we had a similar establishment or similar situation with an establishment in downtown Omaha that was creating problems for the neighbors and the neighborhood. And the decision we made that day was not based on race. And the decision we make here today will not be based on race. It'll be based on the merits and the information that we have in front of us to consider, and nothing about race.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding, Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
I started, um, not to say anything today and just let this pass. But there are a couple of things I do have to say. One is, there was a mention of several other clubs, the Click, the Cartiers and all of those. Um, we worked very diligently with most of those organizations, matter of fact, one moved to downtown where they caused more problems downtown, and we had to address that downtown by, uh, going after their liquor license because they were causing so many problems downtown. And they used to be at Cartiers, which used to be several other names and so forth. So, we have worked with a number of other people, I think in this particular instance, a couple of things I want to say. One is, this council, for as long as I've been on it, for the, for the 10 plus years that we've been on it, we have been, this council has been aggressive about going after, uh, and establishing more rules for, um, organizations and establishments that sell alcohol. For example, at convenience stores prior to this council, I'm not sure that there was ever any effort to stop people from selling single cans or single bottles or so forth. Um, so I think this council, this council has done, um, has been aggressive about it for a reason because there have been these problems that needed to be addressed, which is why we spent significant amounts of time, especially uh, myself and Councilmember Festerson and Councilmember Jaram, on the Good Neighbor Ordinance. Because we had, we felt like we needed another tool to address some of the significant problems that exist in the community. I think, first of all, I'm going to be supportive of this because I think the argument belongs in Lincoln and not here. But I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize racism. That, that's the one thing I don't want to do. And I'm going to give you an example. Several years ago, this council, we had to redistrict because there was a 10% variance in our, in my district and a couple, and a couple of other council members' districts, so we had to, um, redistrict. So I picked up more of the northern part of the city. As a result of that, and I agree with you, Mr. Overton, the vast majority of people in Florence are good decent people. But I will tell you this for a fact, when we redistrict, there was a phone call that came to the council office during the last election because a person was upset because they had to vote for me or one other black person because we redistrict. So, to assume that racism does not exist, we haven't been watching the news. We haven't been paying We haven't been paying attention if we assume that it doesn't exist. And if we assume that it doesn't exist here, we're really not paying attention. But the other side of that, though, Mr. Overton, is that I think this belongs in Lincoln. I think that's where it needs to be addressed. I, I don't necessarily agree that we have, the issues that exist there, where your establishment is, there is room for improvement. There is absolute room for improvement, and I think that needs to occur. But I think this argument belongs in Lincoln, so I'm going to be supportive of the long form, because I think that's where this discussion belongs. It needs to start here, but we need to be honest about it. Number one, you've got issues that need to be addressed. There's no question about that. Okay? Number two, racism does exist. If we don't, if we don't believe that, then we're not watching the news, and we're not paying attention to what's going on, not only in this city, but in this state and in this nation. So for me, I'm going to be supportive of the long form, because I do think you have issues that need to be addressed, and they have not, up to this point, been addressed adequately, and they need to be done so. But let's add to that, let's don't dismiss issues of race. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Pauls, Chairman of the Liquor Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say a little bit about, when I voted for you to be president, I did not look at you, because you happen to be of a different race than I. I voted for you because of your intellect, your tenacity, and your love for the city. And I do know at times racism does evolve. I'm not naive. But I want to assure you, on that particular vote, I wasn't thinking in those terms. Now, as Chair of the Law Committee, we try to be as fair, and we, sometimes, people come in front of us several times, and I think we are as honest with you as we possibly could. We listen to you, and I anticipated, because I'm pretty optimistic, I thought things would happen better than what they have, in my estimation. But just to let you know about this, earlier, we backed off on approving a liquor license, because there were some issues that came to us, so we didn't vote on it. And that particular person was Caucasian. But today, just to give you an example, today in our liquor committee meeting, our Law Committee meeting, we had a number of taverns, lounges, bars that we went over, and we discussed, we talked about restaurant taxes, because I think everybody should be on the same playing field. We had a police captain in there, talking about a particular establishment, because we're trying to make this a better place, so it's enjoyable, so you can go to a place with comfort, and people of all, I'll use the word, of all nations can have a place to go. So I truly believe that we are trying to make an effort. And I see this as going to stretch you a little bit, but that's what I am thinking about, and that's why I will vote for this, because I think this will stretch you a little bit. And you have, it's your opportunity to prove to us again, say, hey, I can do it. You may need our help, but I'm going to put this back on you. And let's see what you can learn.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Melton.
With Councilmember Pauls, in fact, I think it was a 7-0 vote for President Gray, because we believe in, believe in his leadership. I, I value his opinion, and actually, your mentorship over the years, since I started on the council. But every time we have something, we also can't minimize racism by claiming everything is racist. I want to say, over the last, was it about four years? I think we were battling with certain bottle clubs, and a certain owner of a bottle club here in Omaha, that I spent a lot of time on. And, and I can tell you that Mr. Harrington thought it was personal against him, too. He's a white Caucasian. I can tell you, it wasn't. We're looking at issues with bottle clubs, with bars, that are affecting neighbors. Bottom line. And it doesn't matter. I mean, sometimes the neighbors are, are minority neighbors that are being disturbed. Most of the time, when we have opponents to liquor licenses in the North Omaha area, we have the Baptist preachers, and the neighbors, and the churches coming in and objecting to them. So because they don't want, they don't want the kind of disturbances that sometimes a lot of liquor establishments create. They don't want to have liquor establishments all over North Omaha, when they're taking all this time and spending all this time to try and make things better. So that, I'm hearing that from the North Omaha community. So what I don't want to do is, every time we, we do something, you can't necessarily blame it on race, because then it does actually minimize the racism that does exist in our community. So I'm looking at, when I look at this, and by the way, a number of times, I've gone against the council and voted for, I'm a big proponent of small business entrepreneurs, and there have been occasions where I voted to give them a chance. Let's see, let's hope that they can be good business owners, against the objections of people, and they're minority business owners. I want them to succeed. I want small, locally-owned businesses to succeed. I want your business to succeed. But right now, it's not succeeding. And I have to look at the tavern reports. And in fact, it, it seems to me, it's kind of a dangerous people for your, dangerous place for your customers to even go. So I think by giving, by giving you the time to do the long form, I, we're voting on the long form, but it's still going to give Rain the opportunity to keep their liquor license right now, fill out the long form, and come back before council again. And we will get, we will get more reports, and perhaps Sergeant Matusik will come back and say, you know, it's, holy cow, we haven't had any issues. Whatever they're doing, they're doing right. I mean, you're getting another opportunity, but I, what I don't like is, I, you know, again, I, I think that the, the neighbors and the people that have come down here are good, honest people, trying to run a business, trying to live in their home that they've owned for a very long time, and they don't want the disturbances. And, and I think they, they deserve to not have their, worry about their business at night, not have their customers be able to park, leave their car in an automotive repair place overnight, not be able to sleep with their windows open, even when you live along a, you know, a, a commercial place. Lots of people live in Dundee, live in Benson, and they're not having, having those kinds of, those kinds of issues with the noise. So not on a regular basis. We understand, and I understand, sometimes things get out of hand, customers come to your bar that you don't want there, I get that. But when it happens this many times, it, it becomes a problem with the ownership. It becomes a problem with the establishment, and there, and there are things that they can do, that, that I believe you can do, to keep that from happening. And I would say, first, the first thing that you probably need to do is make some amends with the neighbors. Y'all are going to have to get along, because if you continue to disturb the neighbors, then it does break the good neighbor ordinance. So I would, I would encourage you to reach out and be a member of the Florence Neighborhood Association, be involved with the Neighborhood Patrol. I mean, hopefully, they have your cell phone number, so that they can contact you and get in touch with you. I mean, and that has worked before. It's worked with other liquor establishments here in the city, where we've encouraged them to get involved with the Neighborhood Association and work together. Let them help you have a good establishment, if, if that's the case. So that's why I'm, I'm supporting this, the long form. In fact, I, it's going to give you the opportunity, and maybe give you the incentive, to try and make your establishment a place that the neighbors can live with, that isn't coming back in front of the council multiple times. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton and Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. I'm just going to be brief, Mr. President. First of all, let me say, when we're talking about Cartiers or whatever it was at the time, and I don't, it wasn't Cartiers, that, the Kino King, when it was Kino King at the time, those weren't, those people weren't black. Those were, those were, those were other individuals. When it was Cartiers, it was someone else. But here's the point that I'm making, though. Yeah, the patrons.
Mr. Overton, please.
Yeah, but I, I got it. But, you know, I, that's why I started not to say anything, because I didn't want to raise, I didn't want to give a whole lot of credence to an argument who's, where it is not, this is not the appropriate place or time to have the discussion, but we, but, but if we keep ignoring racism, it's going to kill our country. It's going to kill this city, if we don't, if we don't deal with it. But more importantly, we're not treating, we're not treating Rain any different than some of the others that we've had issues with. I can tell you that from where I sit. We're not treating you any different. But we are suggesting to you that there are issues that need to be addressed, and you have to continue to work on addressing them. Part of the problem is, and I know it's a difficult time to deal with it, or difficult to deal with, but the clientele, probably some of that, needs to go away, for you to be successful. And I think you can be successful. But we're not treating you any different from some of the others that we have had to address. We've addressed everyone the same way, equally across the board. I think if people look at it, they will see that we have done that. As a council, we've addressed it across the board the same way. So again, I, I didn't want to raise it, but I don't want us to minimize the issue of race either. But in this particular instance, what has to occur is there needs to be, we're going to support the long form, and, and while, while we're doing that, there's some things you can be doing. My suggestion is that you do that. My other suggestion is that, if you want some help, call me. Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 20 were held October 8, 2019. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 21 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to address item 23 just for a second, and I am going to support item 23, but I have some questions about it. First of all, I guess whoever, I don't know whether it would be planning or whoever, but I wanted someone to address for me this amount of money that's going to be going for the streetscape on South 24th Street. Once we get that up and running, who's going to manage that? Planning? Law? Somebody. Who's going to manage that?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So this is a situation where, a number of years back, and I can't tell you how many years back, that there was a lot of improvements that were made in this particular corridor along 24th Street from L to Q. So everything that we're talking about today with regard to this particular contract is essentially already there. This contract kind of takes those improvements that were made, such as art panels, light structures, and things like that, and actually does repairs. So we're talking about repainting some of them, we're talking about caulking, we're talking about resetting tiles. Those are the types of things that are being done. So it's not new, it's essentially repairs of things from something that's been done years past.
Okay. Let me, let me just cut to the chase here. You know, I had asked on several occasions about North 24th Street and the streetscape there, especially between Burdette and Ohio Street, because you got trees that are tearing up the concrete now, and it's starting to deteriorate that area. And so I had asked about it, and the response was, from several people that I talked to, both in administration and otherwise, that we form a business improvement district. That's what we've been about the process of doing, is, because I was told the best way to get dollars like this was to make sure that you have, is to have a business improvement district as a partner that is going to continue to manage this once it's up. So that's what we did with, that's what we were beginning to do with North 24th Street, with the business improvement district that we approved as a council a few weeks ago. My point is this, and this is my only point. Once this BID is formed, once we set an assessment, and if our first project happens to be a streetscape project, I'm going to be hard to live with if, if you tell me there's no money. I'm going to be really hard to live with if you tell me there's no money to do this, because these, the project in South Omaha and the one in North Omaha were both done the same year, at the same time. The streetscapes happened at the same time. So South 24th Street needs to happen. There's no question about that. North 24th Street also needs to happen. There's no question about that. I'm supportive of this, but at the same time, I want there to be something positive that goes on when, when our business improvement district is formed, and our first project may be the streetscape project, where we got trees tearing up our sidewalks already. I don't want to hear that this city doesn't have any money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you. That, just had me reread a section of this, and it says, "The Finance Department is authorized to pay the cost of, from the 2018 Transportation Bond Fund." And this is because it is dealing with the streets and the sidewalks. Is that the rationale behind using the money for this transportation bond fund, I guess, finance?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So yes, in this particular case, because it's, it's capital that's in place, it's, it's essentially, that's what we're using, is transportation bond dollars that were previously approved.
Okay. Then now, I'm going to go back to Councilman Gray. In his, if he wants to redo something that's already, apparently is coming apart in North Omaha, could, can that money also be from this Transportation Bond Fund?
There's a potential that, yes, it could be. It's, it's something that there's no project yet identified. If it's just a sidewalk that's cracking, that, in, in certain locations, a lot of times, that ends up being the responsibility of the budding property owner. But if there's a larger area that ends up being more of a, of an extensive type of repair project, that is something that I guess the administration could consider funding.
Well, that could be a potential for some of the issues you're talking about.
I just don't want to hear that there's no money.
Well, but I'm trying to find the money.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion on the consent agenda resolutions? Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 36, an ordinance to acquire property for use by the City of Omaha for the construction of the 18th and Fort Street Sewer Improvements Project.
Public hearing on item 36 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Omnicore Saddle Creek LLC to implement the Saddle Creek at Davenport Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at the addresses listed on the agenda on Wakeley Street and Davenport Street and 315 North Saddle Creek Road and Pupperton Park, Lot 1, Block 24.
The public hearing on item 37 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Quality Refrigerated Services, Inc., to implement the Quality Refrigerated Services III Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 4115 South 33rd Street.
The public hearing on item 38 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any other proponents? The public, oh, excuse me, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 39, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the University of Nebraska at Omaha on behalf of the Nebraska Center for Justice Research in the amount of $38,242.
The public hearing on item 39 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to issue general obligation and refunding bonds of the City of Omaha in aggregate principal amount, if not to exceed $65 million, for various purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2019.
The public hearing on item 40 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Curtis, I just have a couple of questions, because this is a pretty large amount, sixty-five million for bond. And I opened up the package, and I looked how it was, I guess it would be, it's going to be issued. I see public facilities. It's going to be five million. Do, I don't, do you have this in front of you?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yes, I do.
Okay. Could you just give me an idea of what that five million, what it's going to be proposed for?
You know, I didn't bring a further breakdown. What we normally do is take the CIP and any projects in the CIP that are slated for this time period or have begun but haven't been financed yet. So, it'll be accumulation of all those projects in the CIP under these authorization areas. And we can get you, we could probably get you a schedule.
I'm just curious, because I think the public, sometimes when they see sixty-five million, that seems like a big amount, or not seems like it is. And then, but I don't know if they delve into what it's being used for. Okay, then I'm looking under public safety, which was authorized in 2014, so some of these old bonds go back ways. That's like two and a half million dollars. Any idea about that, or, and I'm not trying to blindside you.
No, no, that's fine. I brought this breakdown, but I didn't realize you wanted the breakdown below this one. We can get that to you. That'll show you, and we can publish it any way you want, that shows the CIP projects that correspond to these particular categories.
Okay. Well, then I'm just going to go down the list. Parks and Recreation, which was also authorized in 2014, that's a little over two million. And then we have Streets and Highways, which is thirty-one and a half million. As I go further along, then it even shows how that's broken down in two different sections. You know, I just thought that...
And remember, when you go through and you bring the, the projects out of the CIP, you look into, you look to see what authorization is still left. And even if there's authorization from the fourteen bond authorization, they'll go back and finish using all that authorization first.
Yeah. And then the sewer, in parentheses, Environment, which was also in 2014, is one and a half million dollars. That, again, is projects for the future. Is that what I'm to understand?
Those are projects that would be a little more environmental. Mr. Stube may have a little more information. Those would not be generally the big projects that you'd see come out of the sewer.
With that kind of money, no.
Right. The sewer fund would take care of those large projects. This would be a little bit more environmental, maybe some drainage issues. I'm not sure exactly what. But again, we can get a specific breakdown, because those would be in the CIP.
And I, if I had known, I would have probably asked for that earlier.
One other thing to note, too, is that on the current refunding at twenty-two-point-three million, remember, we put the largest number possible in any candidate, but we pretty quickly screen those down as the process goes. I think we've already screened it down to about eight or ten million of actual refunding that we're going to do in this offering.
Okay. So, like the current refunding bonds, it's twenty-two, two million. You say that'll be much less?
Yeah. We usually screen those down fairly quickly depending on the characteristics of some of the refunding.
Well, because as I look further down, it says a lot of it's to do away with the bond issues from our annexation of Districts Fourteen, Four-Sixty-three, Forty-Three, Forty-Seven, Four-Ninety-eight, and Five-Hundred. It's what...
Yeah, and those may still be done. What we could do, when we finally do the author, when we do the final on the day that we actually run the final ordinance, we'll have the exact list and what it equates, so we can show you which things we actually refunded.
Okay. Well, the part that impressed me is when the city was expected to save over a million, one-three-hundred-thousand dollars just on interest costs on this particular refunding.
Yeah. Think about it. You have a lot of those bonds that go out twenty or thirty years, and you're able to take those higher interest rate amounts from those later years and refinance, refinance those with fairly short-term bonds and low rates.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Madam Clerk?
Item forty-one, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter Twelve, Article Seven, entitled Retail Sales of Tobacco Products to Remove an Exemption for Nicotine Delivery Devices from the Tax imposed by this article.
The public hearing on item forty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Mark Welsh. I'm the president of the Group to Alleviate Smoking Pollution of Nebraska, or just GASP for short. And I live at fifty-six-eleven Howard Street here in Omaha. Been in the same place for thirty-three years. First, thank you, President Jaram, for introducing this ordinance to include vaping products with the city's three percent tobacco tax. And also, thank you for your stated purpose, which is to reduce the number of children who would become addicted to vaping nicotine. It's a terrible addiction. President Chris Jaram has started us on the right path. His goal is to prevent a new generation of young people from vaping and getting addicted to nicotine with this new product. We've reduced our tobacco use in youth drastically in the thirty-plus years I've been working on this issue. However, studies show that a substantial price increase of at least ten percent is necessary to deter children from starting to smoke. This three percent vaping tax won't be enough to stop youth from buying the product, from buying nicotine. If we're going to prevent children from starting to vape, we must take bigger steps. The City Council and Mayor can't create a city tax higher than three percent on those products without putting that issue on the ballot for voter approval. That is something that we should consider doing. Adding vaping products to the City of Omaha's tobacco tax would be a small step in the right direction, but it would not prevent many children from starting to use vaping products. To reduce our children's addiction, disease, and deaths caused by vaping and then tobacco products, the Omaha City Council and Mayor should do much more than increase the price by three percent. Changes that would be effective in reducing youth's use of vaping and tobacco products include asking the Nebraska state senators or voters in Omaha to increase the tobacco and vaping tax by more than ten percent. Number two, raise the age to buy tobacco and vaping products from nineteen to twenty-one. The state just raised it to nineteen. They almost raised it to twenty-one this year. Number three, make it illegal to use vaping products anywhere it is illegal to smoke tobacco. Grand Island did this just a month ago. Number four, very important, ban flavored vaping products. If people, if they don't have orange and mint and menthol, they won't buy the vaping products. It's the candy that gets the kids hooked. And five, and last, create a minimum price for vaping products, just like the state of Nebraska has for cigarettes. Enjoy and Juul are having a price war. Children can buy their products for ninety-nine cents. They can start vaping for ninety-nine cents. Almost every child has ninety-nine cents in their pocket that would allow them to become addicted to nicotine for the rest of their lives. Nebraska does not allow businesses to sell Lucy's. That's one cigarette and a couple of wooden matches. Some of you might be old enough like I am to remember when that was prevalent in this state. I think Omaha should establish a minimum price for vaping products as the state has for tobacco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Dr. Athena Ramos. I'm an assistant professor at the UNMC College of Public Health. I'm here today speaking as a private citizen, but one with, with professional knowledge about public health issues. The City Council's consideration to remove the sales tax exemption for nicotine delivery devices is consistent in treating nicotine products similarly under the ordinance. E-cigarettes, vapes, and other such devices contain nicotine, which we know is an addictive chemical, which is also found in cigarettes, cigars, and other tobacco products. Regardless of whether the delivery device is a cigarette or a nicotine delivery device, nicotine is still addictive and still not healthy. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the use of e-cigarettes or vaping products is unsafe for all ages. The aerosol created by e-cigarettes, vapes, and other similar nicotine delivery devices is not harmless water vapor. Instead, the aerosol emitted contains various levels of nicotine and a number of other potentially harmful and toxic substances, including heavy metals like lead, volatile organic compounds, and cancer-causing agents. Many of these agents are on the Food and Drug Administration's list of harmful and potentially harmful substances. There is also evidence that non-users may be harmed from second-hand nicotine exposure from e-cigarette aerosol as well. For example, nicotine exposure can harm brain development throughout the life course, but particularly during the prenatal period, adolescence, and early adulthood. Exposure to fine and ultrafine particles in e-cigarette aerosol may exacerbate respiratory ailments like asthma, damage lung tissue, and impair lung function. Nicotine also impacts the cardiovascular system, causing an increase in blood pressure and heart rate. It constricts the arteries and contributes to the hardening of artery walls, which in turn may lead to a heart attack. The Surgeon General has declared an epidemic of e-cigarette use among youth, but there's risk for all people. As you might have heard in the news over the last couple of weeks, there's been almost fifteen hundred cases of lung injury associated with the use of e-cigarettes or vaping products that have been reported to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, including cases right here in Nebraska. As such, we, as concerned citizens and organizations, have a role to play in addressing this problem. Twenty states have already led the way in taxing e-cigarette and vaping products. However, more must be done to protect youth from the harms of these products. And for this reason, a growing number of municipalities and states are banning flavored products, are increasing the minimum age to purchase cigarette and vape products, they're limiting associated advertising and including e-cigarettes and smoke-free policies in order to protect the health of the public. So, in conclusion, I support your efforts to include nicotine delivery devices under the occupation tax and treat them consistent with products that deliver nicotine under the law. I hope that in the future, you'll consider additional strategies to combat this epidemic in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm Adipur, Director of the Douglas County Health Department, and I'm representing also the Douglas County Board of Health today. We are in full support of the ordinance changes that you are presenting today, and we are asking the council to set aside five percent of the proceeds to the Douglas County Health Department for surveillance and health education and prevention. Let me share with you some local data. The YRBS, which is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that is done in ninth to twelfth grade, asked two vaping questions. One question was, "Have you ever used an electronic vapor product?" In 2018, last time the survey was done, forty-three-point-nine percent, half of the youth who conducted the survey, reported that they tried vaping. The second question was, "Are you currently using an electronic vapor product?" And in 2018, twenty-eight-point-eight percent of our young people said yes.
Is that in Douglas County?
That's in Douglas County. That's three of ten individuals. So, regarding illness a little bit, you heard nationwide, as of October fifteenth, we have one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-nine lung injury cases that are associated with the use of vaping products or e-cigarettes. They are reported from forty-nine states, and thirty-three deaths have also been reported from twenty-four states. In Nebraska, we have eleven cases, five of them in Douglas County. One of them is a death, unfortunately. A formal process has been established for investigating cases. Healthcare providers contact the Douglas County Health Department or the state when they recognize that a patient in their care has a vaping-related lung injury. Our epidemiologist or the state epidemiologist then conduct a medical abstraction to assess whether the patient meets the CDC case definition. Once the patient is identified as a case, our disease investigators then call these patients to get additional information, like what product did you use, and so on. And from the eleven Nebraska cases, we learned that the median age is twenty-five years, eighteen to sixty-eight. Eight are females, five are males. All have used e-cigarettes or vaping products that use parts or cartridges. Five used nicotine, five used THC, and one used both. They are purchasing these products. Five were purchased from other individuals, five, three purchased them in vape stores or dispensaries, and three purchased them from convenience stores or gas stations. At the Douglas County Health Department, we have set up an internal cost department team made up of epidemiologists, disease investigators, health promotion, tobacco control, tobacco cessation staff, public communication, environmental health, and emergency response coordinators. Every two weeks, we are participating in a phone call with the CDC, Center for Disease Control, where they are sharing new clinical features that they are seeing in the cases, and they are revising and making new recommendations to healthcare provider. It is up to us then to share that new information with the healthcare provider. We have a system called the Health Alert Network, which goes out to all of our healthcare providers in our community. Now, regarding taxing, a July twenty-nine article had actually the headline, "People are ditching cigarettes for vaping for reasons other than health." And what the study found is that smokers are making the change to vaping because they are seeing tobacco taxes increasing, so they are switching over. Many studies have shown that increasing the tobacco tax is one of the most effective ways to reduce smoking, especially among youth. Even tobacco companies admit in their own documents that tobacco tax increases reduce youth smoking, which is why they vehemently oppose them. In summary, we are in support of applying, applying an occupational tax to e-cigarettes and vaping products, and are asking the council again to provide potentially five percent of the revenue that you are collecting to the Health Department for us to have actually a comprehensive tobacco cessation program that includes e-vaping and also have a surveillance program in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Just for clarity, the proposal would eliminate the language in the tobacco tax that exempts nicotine and containing products and the devices that deliver them. So, there could be vaping products that don't contain nicotine that would not be covered by this proposal as written. Are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Scott Laughtonbaugh. I represent the Nebraska Vape Vendors Association. And we, of course, object to the tax. We object to being lumped in with tobacco. The rationale seems to be to treat, treat like products similarly, as I understood it. Vaping products are not like tobacco products. Not all vaping products have nicotine in them. Some have caffeine. Some have flavored juices that people just use to mimic the ritual of cigarette use. That's not the same as tobacco. And nicotine in vaping products doesn't come from tobacco. You can find nicotine in eggplants. You can find nicotine in tomatoes. It's a naturally occurring thing. All those things are not tobacco. We're not going to tax them under the occupation tax for tobacco. It is important to note that, and I think President, Council President Jaram, Jaram alluded to this, in your current definition in the ordinance from which vaping products are exempt from the tax, says any nicotine delivery device providing for the ingestion of nicotine. Well, how would that ever be enforceable when devices can deliver caffeine? They can deliver flavored juice. They can deliver nicotine. It's what you choose to do. I don't know how, as worded, this would be enforced. I know the state of Nebraska came up with an improvident definition of this year redefining small cigars of a certain type as cigarettes, and they wrote rules that determined that if a small cigar had a filter and a hinged lid on the carton, then it was a cigarette. Now, they're getting sued. It's important that these things be done with care. And the current definition in the current ordinance as it exists, I think, could lead to potential litigation as we're encompassing a lot of products that don't necessarily convey nicotine. And to be clear, no one wants children using vapor products. My organization supported the increase to the age of nineteen for the purchase of vaping products. My organization supported the increase to the age of 19 for the purchase of vaping products. And we did that because we don't want to sell to them. The argument was that 18-year-old seniors were buying them for underclassmen. We don't want to be a part of that, and we've addressed that. We're looking at other moves this year in the legislature, perhaps limiting the amount of nicotine a vaping juice can contain, because that seems to be what the kids actually enjoy, is the kind of buzz you get from a whole pack of cigarettes basically in one Juul pod. That shouldn't be allowed. That's not what we sell. To be clear, we do want to work to address the problem we're having here with teen vaping. We don't want to overstate the problem with adult vaping. The Royal College of Physicians in England did a study on this. They found that vaping is 95% and maybe up to 99% safer than cigarettes. They encourage people to vape in their hospitals because it has been a valuable smoking cessation tool. It is working there. It is working here. We have to distinguish between what we are doing to keep kids from starting a bad habit and what we may be doing to get parents off of a bad habit. And we shouldn't penalize one at the expense of the other. I think I said that wrong. We shouldn't penalize one and do more harm to the other. That's not what this council's about, I don't believe. We would ask you to tread very lightly on this. Please don't lump us in with tobacco products. We are not a tobacco product. Please don't surrender to the hysteria that's in the media these days when you read all the way down to find that it says maybe paragraph nine, well, it looks like they were using THC oil-based vaping that they bought illegally already. That's not who we are. We don't want to pay for that. We don't want responsible adults to pay for that. Please think twice about this tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Hi. My name is Tim Bowen. I am the Director of Operations of Aloma Vapor Stores. We have six stores here in Omaha. Aloma was started in a basement ser-
What's your address?
Personal address?
Business address.
Business address. The office is at 9719 M Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68127.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. So, the first brick-and-mortar vapor store in Omaha, practically in the Midwest, was started right here in Omaha, Nebraska. It was started by a gentleman whose name is Sam Salameh. He made a commitment to his father, who was in the hospital, deathly sick with pneumonia, "Son, you've got to stop smoking. Do anything." Sam made a promise, and for three years, he searched for an alternative to cigarettes, which he had been smoking for over 25 years. He found some very crude devices in the beginning, electronic cigarettes, working with a battery and atomizer, and you would drop liquids in them and atomize them, smoke it, vape it, and it would give you a nicotine hit, if you will. You would get nicotine from doing that. He started the first business in 2012. I came on board in 2013. I am 64 years old. I had been a two-pack the last nine years I was smoking. I was smoking three packs of cigarettes a day, and I was desperate, desperate to find anything that would prolong my life, make me healthier, and get me off of cigarettes that I had smoked. And they were in control of me. Electronic cigarettes worked. My background is in retailing. I told Sam, "You've got something here because if it'll make me not smoke and help me give up cigarettes, then it can work for anybody." Because I had tried Shantex, I had tried the patch, I had tried gums, everything, hypnosis, everything. Nothing worked. Okay. So, nobody is more anti-tobacco than the vaping industry. Okay?
Please direct your remarks-
It's absolutely true.
Please direct your remarks to us.
Nobody is more anti-tobacco than the vaping industry. And we are talking about something that has been proven to be more effective, in fact, the most effective means of smoking cessation. Vaping is 65 to 70% more effective than any other alternative solution for a smoker. And in part, it's because it mimics two things that a smoker does, right? It's a hand-and-mouth habit. Phone rings, pick up a cigarette, get in the car, go driving, pick up a cigarette. If you have never smoked, you may not understand, but these are physiological as well as psychological habit that occurs in people who have anxiety. Most vapors, most smokers also are very anxious people. Since 2013, Aloma, which at that time was called Plumes, mandated that nobody under the age of 18 would be allowed to buy any of our products. Other predominantly vapor stores, and I'm saying vapor stores because there's a big distinction between the people that are in the business to get, help people get off of cigarettes and give them support and encouragement, that's the vapor stores, versus a retailer that just has them on a shelf and gets paid for that shelf space, by the way, to have them sitting there, and a person that wants to try it, or a teenager that looks to be more mature than they are, can walk in and they can buy it. There is no age verification that goes along with it. In the vapor stores today in Omaha and in Nebraska, there is electronic identification, age verification. A driver's license has to be scanned for an individual to be able to buy any of these products.
I'm going to need you to kind of get along. You're at five minutes.
Very good.
Everyone else spend no more than three and a half.
Okay. I am asking you not to make the amendment, not to amend the statement. I am asking you to, let's look at a different solution. Let's put these products where they will be policed, where enforcement can be done, and put them in the hands of the professionals that sell these products, not in mass retailers. I would also mention that this tax will no longer affect the people that are the largest portion of this business, which are the Walmarts, the Walgreens, the Baker's Grocery Stores, and others who are now pulling vapor products off of their shelves because they know they cannot inhibit the sales to minors because they have no age verification policies in place. On the THC thing that everybody is talking about, all of the illness and something that the CDC has not asked any of the state health agencies to provide is a urinalysis test in which somebody that has the vaping disease can walk in or goes to the hospital, the first thing they do is a urinalysis to see if they're taking THC. These cartridges, this thing right here, this glass piece, is sold on the street with cannabis in it, okay? Liquid cannabis. And drug dealers buy them from somebody, I don't know who, and they sell them to the youth. Drugs are not coming from reputable retailers, reputable vapor stores, or anybody else. These are illicit street drugs. Most of you, I think, are old enough to remember the phrase, "Drugs kill." We kind of grew up with that. Well, they're doing it again today, but they're doing it in a tank that's being attached to a device like this where it's heated up and inhaled, and because the chemical composition of what's in that tank is incorrect, is wrong, it's deadly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other opponents?
My name's Eric Johnson. I'm the owner of Caterpillar Vapes and also a member of the Nebraska Vape Vendors Association. Our address is 10810 Q Street. And I'd like to start out with kind of making a, I think it's a really important point, and that's zero. There have been zero in the last 15 years documented cases of people that have been going, have had health problems due to nicotine-level vaping. There's also zero deaths from nicotine-level vaping. Now, vaping itself exists inside of a box. You can have CBD, you can have nicotine, you can have cannabis, you can have caffeine. It's a lot of different things. So when we start hearing about things like vaping is increasing among the youth, it's important to distinguish our youth vaping amongst those different categories because they really do make a difference. Marijuana vaping especially has gone up by quite a bit. When we talk about this as a tax, I think it's important for us to consider this from a moral and ethical perspective. Many of the people that are our customers are of the lower socioeconomic spectrum. Any tax to them is going to make a big difference. It is very important that we make that consideration. These are folks that are trying to quit. They're trying to become healthier. Vaping as a whole is proven to be healthier. It has been set up by the Royal College of Physicians so that we understand what the implications are from a scientific perspective, and it's now being implemented over in the UK. To kind of give you a comparison, energy drinks alone, 20,000 visits to the ER every year since 2011. There have been 34 deaths. That's from energy drinks. Smoking, there are 1,300 deaths a day, 41,000 deaths a year, and it takes 10 years off of your life. Vaping is a product, is the number-one way for people to get off of that cycle. Tim said it very clearly. He was a three-pack-a-day smoker. You have no idea how many people come into our shops on a regular basis and are thankful three, four weeks later when they quit, when they no longer have that demon riding their shoulder. While we understand that switching, that increasing taxation does actually end up limiting use, that is exactly what we should be doing. We should be increasing the taxation on tobacco products, but not increasing the tax on a product that helps people to resolve an addiction issue. It's incredibly important for us to recognize that this issue itself is separate from the issue of any type of situation regarding the kids. We understand that there are issues that go on with that. We disagree vehemently with some of the assumptions that have been made regarding flavors versus nicotine amounts. We believe that the nicotine amounts that are being conveyed or provided to children is the real reason, not the actual flavors. We believe that we can help people by establishing safe boundaries where you have to come to a place that actually has age limitations in order to be able to purchase. We believe that it is possible for us to continue to help people, but we need your help as well. Now, this taxation is something that could end up really helping people from a perspective of helping push them towards a safer product, or it could end up pushing us into a situation where people perceive tobacco and vaping in the same light. Once that happens, now you've got an equivalency. Now people will perceive as authoritative that these two are the same thing, which they are not. Once that happens, now you slow that decline of smoking and the increase of vaping, and you've stopped a massive health benefit to our community and to our society. How many people are going to pay the price with their health, with their money, and how much is it going to cost us as a society when we continue to have to provide medical services for those who end up being addicted to smoking?
Thank you. I'm going to need you to wrap up.
No problem. I thank you very much for this. I hope you'll consider that as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think two of the main arguments proposed on this ordinance by Councilman Jerem and then also by the mayor are equity and taxation, and then certainly recognizing a public health concern. And it is concerning, and I appreciate the testimony from the Board of Health and the Douglas County Health Department, with some alarming statistics that talk about, you know, 44% of our youth having tried it, about three out of 10 young people are using these products at this time. That's concerning, and I see it too, and I also see it in our public parks when they're disposed of. A couple of just practical questions I wanted to ask Mr. Curtis, I think that I haven't had a chance to ask about the ordinance. So, I noticed that should this go into effect or should this be approved? There's a two-week implementation like most ordinances, but I'd also observe that in other similar ordinances like this, we've typically given a little more lead time to actually implement something like this. Do you feel like a two-week implementation is realistic from your perspective?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I think in this situation, most of the stores are already involved with our auditors because they sell both products in many cases. In the few spaces that don't, we'll work with those retailers to get them up to speed as quick as possible.
What's your estimate about how many businesses that would impact?
I don't know that I've seen that number. I want to, I'll have to get that to you. I don't think I'll speculate here.
Okay. And I know we've talked about, I don't think the reason to do this ordinance is for the revenue, but I know you've been asked, what is your estimate of revenue that would be produced? And I think it's definitely an estimate, but can you communicate that as well?
Approximately a million is what we assume this would do, but you're correct. It's an estimate based on some limited information.
So then talk about where would that money go? I believe it goes into the general fund as currently written, correct?
That's correct.
Is that subject, then, like any other general funds, to having to be spent within that calendar year or a two-year rollover?
Yes, it would be the same as any other funds in the general fund.
Okay. So non-factor in 2019, but 2020 might be something that would, you know, be of impact. And then a question I hadn't thought of that was raised by the Board of Health as well. So should some portion of funds be desired to be used for, say, in this case, education and prevention services? I assume you'd want to wait for, well, to see how this would operate, how it would come in, and should there be something specific for these funds? That's a whole nother contract and whole nother consideration that's not involved with this ordinance, right?
Yeah, I would say that would be better handled in the budgeting process because we'll have all those priorities to deal with, and that budget coming up would be 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Festerson, Councilmember Melton.
Yes, I might just have a couple of questions that I think would need to be clarified because the definition, just the portion that was exempted that we're now looking to unexempt, says any nicotine-delivery device providing for the ingestion of nicotine into the body. So does that include the actual vapor machine, that little thing that I think that the gentleman from Caterpillar Vapes held up? Does that include the machine?
Yes.
So, and then if it includes the machine, it seems to me that it would include nicotine gum, lozenges, and patches.
That is correct. If you wish to exempt the gum or the lozenges, we'd need amendment to do that.
So we would have to do a specific amendment?
Correct.
Otherwise, anything with nicotine in it will be taxed.
Correct.
Okay. Because I think that that wouldn't potentially impact people that, there are, I mean, I think CVS doesn't sell cigarettes. At least I thought I heard that. They don't sell cigarettes anymore, but they very well may sell these products because their whole goal, so there may be more people than we thought.
City law has said that they could draft something, the draft that would exempt the patches and the gum if a council member wished to do that.
Okay. And then I just have one more question for Mr. Curtis. We had currently, right now, that this tax goes to the revenues go to the cancer center. Isn't that correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yes, that's correct. Up to 3.5 million. Remember, that's kind of the operative term.
Is it up to 3.5 million per year, or is it 35 million total in 10 years?
That's a great question. I don't know that we've adequately addressed that.
Okay, because it was my understanding that the tax would be in place until they received 35 million or 10 years, whichever occurred first.
I think you're right. Fortunately- Fortunately for all of us, it runs about 3.5 million a year, so it, it seems to be fulfilling about where it's supposed to be. But I believe you're correct. It sunsets at the end of 2022.
So currently with this, wouldn't all the additional revenue still go to the cancer center, and it would just then sunset sooner?
No, because the way that that was written, it was 3.5 million per year. So anything additional that would stay with the, anything addition, in addition to that would stay with the city.
Okay.
In any given year.
But have there been any years where we've gone below 3.5 so that we may not actually fulfill our $35 million commitment in, within the 10 years?
Yeah, I think currently we have a deficit of maybe 100 or 200,000, so we've been pretty close to 3.5 million. So we would potentially make that up. And we, it's been our habit to make that up in any year where it's been a surplus in that fund, we would make that up to them. But I think it's about 100 or 200,000 behind right now.
So it, so that money then would, that would go to the cancer center, and then anything over 3.5 million would be something that we could consider. I know, you know, Douglas County Health Department asked us for money today, and I guess the whole thing going through my mind was, I thought it all had to go to the cancer center.
No, but I would remind, as we talked about before, it could be addressed in the budgeting process, and we all know 2021 has some interesting things coming, so I would ask everybody to keep that in mind.
Okay. Way to pay for our trash, is that it?
Potentially.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions, because to me, I'm going to have to really think through this. Mr. Jerem, have you purchased, ever purchased a, the juice or whatever?
No. I, thankfully, I count myself among those of never been a vapor or a cigarette smoker.
Well, you know, we're making such a big deal about the tax, it's going to drive people away. I can remember, remember many years ago when I was addicted to nicotine, because I smoked like, you know what. The taxes didn't bother me because I wanted to smoke. Eventually, I quit smoking. But I mean, I, the three, that's why I like to know how much, if I buy a little, what's something like that cost? Does anybody on here?
Yeah, the Caterpillar guy, he's a nice guy. Come on down.
How much was it? Eric, I just need some information.
He can give you some answers on costs.
But, okay, then, so, so the, the size of the?
You have to tell us your name again, Eric.
Eric Johnson.
Thank you.
The size of the bottle is going to depend upon, much for the most part, on your price. It can range anywhere from $13 to $23 for a 30-milliliter bottle, all the way up to $60 or $70 for a 100-milliliter bottle.
Okay, if I got the regular-sized bottle in about 15 bucks?
Sure.
I'll have to go out and check this out because I drive on your place. 3% of that, you think that's going to stop somebody from wanting to?
It's not going to stop them. And that's part of the point is that, is that because it's not going to stop them, they're going to go back out to their car, and they're going to scramble for some additional loose change, and they're still going to do it, exactly to your point. You didn't care what the tax was. Somehow, some way, you were going to find the money to pay that additional tax. You were going to do it no matter what. So this gets back to having a tax that's not progressive, it's regressive, and it's affecting those folks who, who need every penny that they can back into their pocket. So to that, to your point, it, it is important for us to recognize that, that those of us who have a little bit more, 3% tax really doesn't mean anything. And it means, as a business owner, I'm passing it along to my, to my customers. That doesn't mean anything to me. But it will affect them. It will affect them.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is, I'd like to say deja vu all over again, because when I was down in legislature and we banned smoking in the bars?
And there were Clean Air Act, you mean?
Yeah, they, you cannot believe how many places I'd go into, they really didn't care for me during the voting process, but after it was over, now they love it. Because, you know what I mean? So initially, there's some tension because you're voting on something, because I'm going to destroy their business. They would say, you're going to, you're going to take all my business away from me. That's why I think about this. This is not going to take business away from you, especially if Walmart and all those big stores quit selling it, they're going to go to the small guy or to the corporation that sells it. I'm, I'm still up in the air. Are you tied to this really tight?
What do you mean?
To your, what you want to get done on this ordinance? I mean?
Well, if I weren't committed to it, I wouldn't have proposed.
No, I'm saying, no, I mean, this is exactly what you want.
You know, I'm willing to, to listen, but to, you know, Councilmember Melton's idea about the gum and that, I'm open to that. And, you know, I personally question why we have a sunset clause. I mean, the problem with nicotine and tobacco use isn't going away when the cancer center commitment or the city goes away. And I, I personally believe if we're serious about as a city, aspirationally, there, there could be funds if we as a body commit to the research and the surveillance and the things that, like Dr. Poor said, that we have two major research institutions in this city.
See, that's what I'm asking. I mean, that's not anywhere.
But that's just me speaking.
Well, but I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. How tight are you to this? If that would encourage me a little bit more to see that some of those funds would go?
You know, I, you know, the goal, the goal is equity and fairness in the tax and trying to prevent another generation of nicotine-dependent Omahans, particularly in youth, by taxing nicotine-containing products and the devices that deliver them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, I'm sorry, could I, I had a couple of questions for you. And you'll have to say your name and address again.
Eric Johnson, 10810 Q Street.
Thanks. Okay, I need a little help with my math here. When, when you're discussing with Councilmember Pauls the cost of a, a bottle of juice, if, and I know you can, or I think I know, you can adjust the level of how much nicotine is delivered, if you will, per, per hit. Is that correct?
Yeah, so maybe a really good?
Don't, don't do it, just show it.
Okay, here we go. All right. Let's pretend like this is a Juul, all right? We're going to pretend, and we're going to say that this is an actual device. And I know a couple of people, we've, we've had the pleasure of having a discussion about this.
Can you tell us about, like, okay, the customer would have paid about this much for this and this much?
Well, that's, hold on, I'm trying to get there.
Yeah, well, and that, and that's where things start to get a little bit hairy, because...
I'm sorry for interrupting. Go answer it, Councilmember Harding.
So, so that's where things start getting a little bit more complicated. There are some places that have decided to implement a tax based upon volume of juice, but that's not really a very good idea because some juice contains higher levels of nicotine versus other juice that contain lower levels. And the, the ideal way to do it is, is you definitely don't want to do it because the people that are taking the lower levels of nicotine are the ones that you want to encourage continuing down that path, right? Because you want to do a step-down process. When we get people in, there are a number of folks who start out really high, and they steadily, gradually go down. So this device, for example, has 2 milligrams per milliliter of juice in it. And this is usually somewhere right in the neighborhood of where most people are at, where our prominent seller is 3 milligrams per milliliter of juice. It's incredibly popular, by far the number one. Now, your size of the bottle may change, but the amount of nicotine per volume of juice stays the same. When you have something like, and I wish this was a Juul, but it's not, when you have something like a Juul, they go as high officially as 59 milligrams per milliliter, and they can go as high even as 69 in certain testing. So when we start talking about the goals of different products and what they're doing and why they're there, this product here is, is not the one that was primarily used by, by people that are good-looking to quit smoking. This product also has a thing called salt nicotine. Now, salt nicotine was developed by the tobacco industry a while back. What happens is, is that salt nicotine does not trigger a reaction in your body the same way that free-based natural nicotine does. Free-based natural nicotine actually is, your body inhibits the amount that you can take in at any one time, becomes incredibly harsh, it's very difficult to take in. Salt nicotine is not, so you can take in a lot more of it. So when we start talking about the problems of youth vaping, for example, it's not about the flavors. Do the flavors probably play a component? Sure. You know, there's a pie chart here of a lot of different reasons why people do things. But the reality is, is that when you can go to the bathroom and you can take a shot of 59 milligrams per milliliter of nicotine, that's where you're going to have problems. The folks that are using this are desperately trying to stay off of cigarettes.
Okay, let me ask in, in a different way. Is there, there's got to be some sort of equivalency between your $15 bottle of juice to how many packs of cigarettes?
Yeah, I can't speak to that officially. I think, I think Tim probably could tell you exactly what the equivalency is. I think he's got that number, I don't.
Okay, hold on. What, Mr. Bowen, why don't you come on up?
You have to say your name again.
I thought maybe Eric might have that information. You had, you have all your other figures in there. I thought maybe you'd have that, so I'll ask Mr. Bowen.
My name is Tim Bowen. The Juul is designed?
No, my question, my question is, on, on a bottle of, of Mr. Johnson's example, the bottle of $15 juice, I don't know how many ounces that is, or what is, how many packs of cigarettes of nicotine is that?
Okay, so here's, let me, I'll preface with just a little bit of information. Most packs of cigarettes contain approximately 30 milligrams of nicotine.
Okay.
Okay? So through, over the course of the day, a consumer will consume approximately 30 milligrams of nicotine.
Per pack of cigarettes?
Per pack of cigarettes.
Okay.
The, uh...
How much is a pack of cigarettes?
How, cost-wise?
Yep.
$5.60 some cents on average, I would say, maybe as high as, as $8.
Okay.
So most of the people that shop in our kinds of businesses are, are moving away from 30 milligrams of nicotine and are moving down towards the three-level, or 3 milligrams of nicotine that Eric is describing. Because the idea is to step yourself down so that you are nicotine-free. You, you no longer have that desire for the nicotine. Now, maybe you'll still vape as, as a zero-nick juice because of the habit that I spoke of earlier, but you, you're, you're reducing your consumption of the actual nicotine, and that's where, you know, the cessation part of what we do works. 3 milligrams of juice in a, in a 60-milliliter bottle of, of product would be $24 at one of our stores, approximately. The same equivalent quantity of juice in a pod system that you're seeing in the schools that none of us like would be $200.
I don't want to, I'm, I'm trying to get to a point here, so don't talk about the Juuls. I want to know about the juice. So, again, bear with me, I'm trying to make a point.
That's okay.
Hopefully, I get there. So if, if, again, in, in a pack of cigarettes, there are 30 units.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I guess part of my point is, what Mr. Johnson said a few minutes ago, is that, you know, if you, if you have this tax that basically becomes an equivalency, and then there's no reason to do one over the other, it, it sounds like your product is less expensive anyway than what a pack of cigarettes is. So, so the argument of using the tax is, is going to be some sort of equivalency or, or form an equivalency such that there's no reason to make the switch? I don't buy that argument.
In all honesty, I think the problem that we really have is that we are being lumped in with tobacco, and...
Well, that's not what, then, then say that.
Okay.
Don't say the other arguments.
And, and none of us feel like we are tobacco at all. We, we don't like tobacco, we are anti-tobacco, as you can be. Most of us are former smokers. Most of us view this as a very unfortunate event. The history about this is...
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
I'll ask a question. And when I met with Mr. Johnson and some others a week or so ago, I, I said the same thing. You know, I, I don't, I don't look at this as a tobacco product. What I look at this is nicotine, nicotine delivery systems. And, and that's my point. But again, the, the point I was trying to make, and I think you, you backed me up on it, is that having this tax isn't some sort of leveling of the playing field such that it's going to drive people to, or either drive people not to switch to vaping, or, or to make it such that tobacco and vaping of nicotine products is the same. I, I think you've, you, you've proved my point. So I appreciate that, and thank you for your, for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item 42, Burton KDV LLC appeals rejection of their bid from September 25, 2019 for the RFP Audit Services for the City of Omaha Project.
First of all, before you tell us your name and I introduce this, thank you for your patience in waiting here today, very, very quietly, attentively. But we'll now call up the public hearing on item 42. All those proponents wishing to be heard, come forward.
Mr. President, council members, thanks for taking a few minutes to, to hear my comments today. It's been a long afternoon, so I'll make my comments brief.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Jean Garles, 16924 Francis Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of Burton KDV, CPA and consulting firm. I'm a shareholder with that organization, and thank you for your consideration of, of hearing our appeal to accept our, our proposal that we submitted for the audit services. I believe that, I believe in fair competition and competitive bidding process, and have served in, have served governmental entities for most of my career, and occasionally things happen that, that sometimes technicalities trigger something that does not allow the competitive bidding to, to move forward, and, and that's the case here. And so simply asking you today to exercise your right to waive, as, as it says in the RFP and as you sure you're all aware, the city has the right to, to waive any deviations, errors that are not material, do not invalidate the legitimacy of the proposal, or do not improve the competitive position. And I think when you look at our situation, the security bid in no way changes or provides any of those matters. So respectfully, I'm asking the city to accept our, our request and waive the requirement and allow our, our proposed bid to, just to be accepted, be accepted and considered, considered in the audit process. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Councilmember, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton?
Well, is there somebody here that can just give us an explanation?
I believe that, that Mr., City Attorney is prepared to speak.
Oh, good. I was just wanting to hear. Thank you.
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. This proposal was for audit services for the Finance Department. It was opened publicly on September 25, 2019 at 11:00 a.m. in this legislative chambers. If you look at the bid specifications, which I printed out, that were posted on the Douglas County's website, and turn to page two, on page two of the bid specifications, you can see in what's highlighted. Now, I did not add this highlighting. This highlighting was contained in the original bid specification documents that were provided to all potential of bid bidders. And it says, "requirements for a bid bond. A bid bond or certified check is required in the amount of $2,500. The bid bond or certified check shall be made payable to the City of Omaha." If you go down to the next paragraph in red lettering, again, not edited or made read by me, but as contained in the original bid specifications, it says, "Bid bond or cashier's check or certified check must be submitted on top of the proposal." So it makes very clear, I know in certain terms, that bid security is required for this proposal. And that's because Omaha Municipal Code Section 10-103 states, "All proposals," this was, remember, a request for proposals, "all proposals or bids for all materials, parts, supplies, equipment, and contractual services in an amount of $20,000 or over, as a guarantee that the contracts will be entered into, must be accompanied by either a certified check, an official bank check, or cashier's check." And it continues on with several other forms of acceptable bid security. So the section requires all proposals, of which this was, to have bid security. Again, it was a, a requirement that was stated on the second page of the request for proposals and highlighted pet lettering and red lettering, and that was the reason for the rejection because there was no bid security that was submitted as part of the proposal.
So no check was submitted at all?
Correct. No bid security or bid bond was submitted at all. This was not an instance of ins... of insufficient bid security. This was an instance of no bid security was submitted as part of the proposal.
Okay.
So, I mean...
We've been here before.
And they're not the only one that was rejected, according to the clerk. Is that correct?
That is correct. There were two rejections for failure to have bid security, one of which submitted a timely appeal. The other entity attempted to appeal but did not submit the appeal paperwork within the statutorily required time. And so, the council didn't have jurisdiction to consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Weason. Yeah, I think our hands are tied on this, according to the city attorney, notwithstanding how professional the appellant appears to be. And, and I Googled your, your company and was on your website. You, you seem to be a, a regional firm, powerhouse in what you do. But I, I think our hands are tied under the law, as our lawyers are telling us, anyway.
Before, and other things where they, where we haven't had a form. And we've, we've actually had, and it's on other things, not on, for an accounting firm. But there have been forms that have just been missing from good contractors that have done work for the city that we like and wanted, wanted them to continue to do work. But if we don't follow our own rules in, in the future, that, we won't, I mean, we, none of our bids will be fair. So, what we, we're required to follow our own rules. So, if it's not fair, as much as we would love to give you that opportunity, there's not a whole lot that we can do. I mean, I, I'd be willing to give, if you would like, yes, if you would like to come up and briefly just respond. Because I didn't know in your appeal what, you know, even what it was for.
Yes, thank, thank you. Gene Garles, 16924 Francis Street. My only comment to that was, if, if that is the case, then, then the, what is the purpose of, of reserving to write to cure any minor material deviations? That clearly is, is written into the RFP and allowed within the city code. So, I, I respectfully disagree that your hands are tied because I do not believe they are. I do not believe this is a material omission that, that changes the playing field at all. Otherwise, that, that cure provision would not be clearly stated within the RFP and within the city requirements.
Okay, thank you. And unfortunately, you haven't seen the amount of appeals we have seen over the years. And if, if we were to have that right to cure for everything, we, there, we would have a lot that haven't been done. So, I, I think it's important that we remain, in my opinion, that we remain consistent with all of our previous rulings. And, and, and that's, that's where we've been. If you talk to Public Works, the Public Works Department, they can tell you this happens frequently, and it's come to us quite frequently as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, I agree because we can't be changing in the middle of the street. But I still can remember when FCC had made a mistake in the bid thing, and we let them go back. It was a significant money error. And we gave them a chance to redo some figures. I can recall that. I could be wrong, not similar to this. But I think if we backtrack, I, I remember those type of things.
That was what Mr. McGruder was claiming, but I don't think we did.
No, no, no. Had nothing to do with him. We, it showed in the documents. But anyway, that's, that's neither here nor there.
Thank you.
It's the place of facts.
Oh, Councilmember Pauls, thank you.
Right.
Finance Director, Mr. Curtis is chopping at the bid to be heard.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I, I will say this has put finance, potentially the city, in a, in a slightly odd situation. And there are a few mitigating circumstances. And, and far be it from me to be on the opposite side of our lawyers. But one is, if you printed this off, all those highlights or red letters, if you print them on a black and white printer, aren't gonna be there anyway. And if you handed it off to somebody in your office and said, hey, we need to respond to this, all that highlighting we talked about is gone. Another thing is, this same bid went out a couple of years ago, and those requirements weren't in there. And oddly enough, we lost, we're losing potentially our current auditor, along with a chance to look at Bergen KDV because of that same problem. They responded to this. It wasn't there before. I think in the case of BKD, they saw it there and thought, well, that doesn't apply. Obviously, it's, it wasn't listed in the list of, here you have to do these things specifically. And I think they assumed, well, that's probably for, you know, street work and some other stuff. It doesn't deal with a professional contract. So, our, our limitation went from four respondents down to two. And so, now we have to pick from the two respondents. And I'm not sure the city's interests are best served by that.
Who are the two?
The two that remained?
Yes.
HGH out of Wichita, HGP or HGH out of Wichita, and then RSM, which has some staff here, but will do this work primarily out of Kansas City and Des Moines and Topeka, I think. So, we lost our two kind of local firms.
Right. But you would agree, I mean, the, the yellow highlighting on the website and the red font are pretty dramatic.
Unless I said like it was printed, and that all that highlighting is now gone, and the red shading is gone. And it's not, that, that requirement isn't included in this, your bid must include these five things. Now, you could, I, you know, I can't, I just, I feel like it's a technicality versus a capability. I realize you're, I realize you have to be consistent in what you've done.
Right.
But this, in one case, it probably hasn't served us well. And we probably need to clarify our, our RFP process a little bit. And in, and in this case, I think these folks only get to come around every three or five years versus maybe somebody who's doing contracting with Public Works, which may bid on two or three things a month. And so, they'd have a chance to rectify this rather quickly.
You did reserve, Mr. Weason, did the city reserve the right to reject all bids and rebid it?
Weason, Assistant City Attorney, that right is always reserved in all bid documents, and I believe by ordinance.
And so, that's, we, we really, we haven't really spent a lot of time with law yet, only because we were waiting for this appeal to work its way through. And now, we'll spend a little time with law to figure out what the best course is for the city.
Thank you. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. My energy drink's worn off, so I want to ask Mr. Curtis something. Did, did I hear you say our current provider, not the company who's here to appeal today, also fell under this, that their bid won't be a part of this process either?
That is correct. And we didn't even get to see the two bids. So, they were screened out at purchasing and never made it to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
No, oh, you need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
I deny today, but if we just decide to throw, I mean, the city always has the right to throw all the bids out and start over.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a motion to?
I'll do a motion to deny.
To deny the appeal. Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 43 through 94, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:57.